If you haven't done so, can you please mute yourselves?
As well as being offered via Zoom for the legislation that was passed recently that allows for hybrid type meetings. Anybody is recording this meeting, that it's fine. You just need to let us know. We are also recording it. But is anybody recording next tonight? Just please state your name and your associate. Anybody else recording this stuff?
Please mute yourself on Zoom.
I believe I'm recording. Good point. You're in D7.
So, a couple of things to start off with.
You will have an opportunity in each individual hearing to have public comments and questions. So if you have certain comments and questions about something that is on for public hearing tonight, please wait till that hearing is open and there will, I promise you, be an opportunity for public comments and questions during the course of the hearing. Okay? Thank you. Can you hear me on Zoom now? Yes? Okay. All right, so 7 o'clock PM, Town Planners Report.
Thanks, Mike. John Goddard, Town Planner. I haven't set it working. Can you hear me now? John Goddard, Town Planner. I'll bring some notes progress. Information taken since the last meeting. Sure. Does standing up help? You can hear me better.
I've been working on it. Please, thank you.
Okay, everybody. I'll do the best I can to speak up and keep it brief. Being the most planning board. Attending the meeting since the last planning board. Between Mass DOT, South W, the traffic consultant for the Carvana project, discussing feasibility and other matters related to the proposed traffic lights at Tannery and College Highway. Most of that discussion revolved around layout constraints and opportunities, funding, historical coordination between the town and Mass DOT. Town Planner provided additional research for the Sunnyside Branch Estates matter regarding the incomplete roadway construction.
All right. Listen, stop, stop, stop. We are not, we are not going to be doing this tonight because we are, and we are, you are right there. You can hear us. We are doing our, we are doing our best, okay?
Hey, Eddie!
Listen.
Hey, guys, hi. Time out. Hi, time out. Listen to the man, please.
We are going to stop and we're going to reschedule this if there's issues. We understand that you can't hear us. We are sitting here working on it. As I said at the beginning, this is a new process for everyone, okay? And we have, I don't know how many people in this room, we are trying our best to do this. So I hear you that you can't hear. We are trying to work through it, but we have to deal with Zoom, we have to deal with the recording, and we have to deal with everybody in here who has to hear. So we are doing our best. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me now? Okay. You can speak fast.
I'll give it a shot. All right, so we just left off on the Sunny Side Branch Estates matter where we are seeking to look into the incomplete road situation, working with Town Planner's Board of Issues, stating on behalf of the town, back to the Property Owners Association. Business items. As mentioned at the last meeting, we do have mandatory conflict of interest forms. Need each member to pop out of the office, open the process, and sign that paperwork. And the same thing for open meeting law and social media, guys. Sorry? Sue. We have received several candidates for the planning board secretary that were in the meeting.
I have a megaphone.
There'll be so much.
Good idea, though.
There's a tech guy. You're not scared of your own. That's the tech guy I hope you.
Why can't we, why can't we hear you?
What's the Bay County project?
Mike, for a second.
Mike, just a quick question. This meeting is, up there. They can sit down, but it's for our benefit. Nobody's going to want to hear that. If they don't be quiet, they're never going to hear.
We are trying to figure out the problems. Everybody commenting and making ambient noise doesn't help it. So my first suggestion would be that if everybody in the room can try to be as quiet as possible, it'll probably be a lot easier for everyone to hear. The second thing is, we are, again, we have been doing Zoom meetings since March of last year. We are trying our best to move into a hybrid model, which so far is not working so well, but we are trying our best to do it. So there are definitely going to be hiccups and we are trying to work through it as quickly as possible. I'm sorry, is this one any better for everybody?
Now you're going to get somewhere, Mike.
Mike, just like you said, you big bucks.
How much?
Did you need to do Jim or it's just Chris? Check it out.
Hey, everybody, how's this? All right, so last minute business from my desk. Oh, I will. Sure. All right. This is the last meeting of the planning board.
They could have my seat.
We really just don't have time providing. I attended a meeting between Mass DOT, the traffic consultant for the Carvana project, and South W, that meeting mostly revolved around design constraints and opportunities for the intersection at Tanner Road and College Highway. Looking at funding sources and the history of work between South W and Mass DOT in terms of their coordination efforts for signalization at that intersection. We have an ongoing research task at the planning office for Sunny Side Branch Estates. There are several roads up there which has been satisfactorily constructed and we have requests to use a file and identify what has happened over a number of years. Business items for the board, we have mandatory conflict of interest certifications, as well as social media policy guidelines for the members to sign. And we did receive an open meeting law complaint, 10 to be specific, revolving around the term Bailey Project, Carvana, and so on and so forth, as discussions have taken place over multiple dates. Mr. Chair, if you prefer, I can read in one of the complaints, the contents are generally the same among itself. Or these can be made a part of the files.
Yeah, let's make, so that the board can hear easier, why don't you read it then?
Sure, happy to do so. This complaint was submitted by Kevin Meier, Attorney General Lang, stamped in June 25, 2021. The violation reads, as I'm designed to read it, "On May 25, 2021, it comes to my attention that the South W Planning Board had been in discussions with several entities in their open meetings dating back as far as January 2021 in regards to the development of a used car processing facility located at 668 College Highway, South W, Massachusetts, yet only released the facility name in meeting minutes, that being Carvana, as of recent, May 25, 2021. Up to the 25, 2021, there is not one mention of Carvana in any planning board agenda or subsequent minutes. It is my belief that the May 25, 2021 planning board meeting was the first mention of the project actually disclosing the true identity of the company that would be erected on a property by the planning board in any public open meeting documents. Prior to May 25, 2021, names that were used in place of Carvana in both agenda minutes were slash are the Griffin Land Trust, parentheses, project, end parentheses, Brinkman Construction Project, 668 College Highway Project, and the Bailey Project. The following agendas do not mention the Carvana project at all in the description of items to be discussed. The discussions were allowed to fall under the title Town Planning Report, yet in the meetings, discussion were had on this specific topic and was taken January 5, 2021, January 19, 2021, February 9, 2021, March 16, 2021, March 30, 2021, April 13, 2021, April 27, 2021, May 12, 2021, and a notice of public hearing dated May 25, 2021. I believe the violation of failure to list the topics with sufficient specificity to reasonably advise the public of the issues to be discussed that need exist. The planning board failed to disclose the true identity of the business that was being considered. The violation was not reasonably discoverable at the time of the search. It was only discovered on May 25, 2021. I believe this filing date is within the 30 days of the date of violation was reasonably discoverable. I also believe this allows for the inclusion of all planning board agendas and meetings that date back to January 5, 2021. It is suggestive that there is evidence of an intricate, intentional violation of Mass General Law, Chapter 48. In the notice of public hearing, identified the project as the application vibration construction for its special permit. It makes no mention of Carvana. The agenda posted for the same meeting, May 25, 2021, titles the agenda items for the same project, the Bailey Project. Planning Board continuously interchanges the title of the same activities throughout its agendas and meetings. It may be impossible for anyone reading the agenda minutes to possibly pour names together as the same project, let alone the derivative of Carvana. I would suggest that this was intentional act to hide the project from the public and it seems that it's too late for the public to actively protest the project. This complaint represents related violations of meeting and agenda items of May 12, 2021. Under the section entered, what action do you want the public body to take in response to your complaint? The communitarian enters. I would like the planning board to delay the vote of approval for this project, all subsequent special permits, until a third party review can be made of all submissions, analysis, plans, and reports for accuracy. I would also like another public hearing that properly identifies Carvana as the applicant slash topic of the public hearing. I would like the public body to acknowledge that they are in violation of the Mass General Law, Chapter 38, and have a result recognize that their official votes, actions, and tax permitted thus far are subject to review and appeal as a result of all, excuse me, and as a result of all approvals from this board need to be reposed and repossessed with proper identification of subject matter, business, and all changes.
So, first, let me offer to the board two steps, just so we understand what the process is. What I'm going to end up asking is that the board designate me to respond to the, which are due, responses are due by July 16 of 2021. So I'm, at the end of this, I'll ask for a motion to appoint me as the one to respond to it. However, I would like to discuss the responses, so you all are aware of it and can have an input here and assist me in tracking it. I will also point out that the individual who submitted these 10 open meeting law complaints, reached out to him on Friday and Monday without response to try to resolve this, which is part of the process. So, these date back to January 5 of 2021. They relate to the meeting agenda and then relate to the meeting minutes. And then one of them relates to the notice of public hearing dated May 25 of 2021. So let's first talk about the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes are designed to be a summary and a correction of what was discussed at the meeting that night. The meeting is recorded. Every one of these meetings that is the subject of these open meeting law complaints is online for everyone to listen to. If in any single one of them, you hear the word Carvana and wish to bring it to my attention, please feel free to, prior, I mean, I say that, prior to the opening of the public hearing on May 25. If on any of those prior meetings, you hear the word Carvana, tell me, because I'm not aware of it. So with regard, no, we're not, please, please, I have the floor and I would like to speak and you will have your opportunity to speak at a later time. If Carvana is not mentioned in the meeting, I don't know how it should make it into the meeting minutes. Secondly, with regard to the agenda items related to the Town Planners Report, this is a agenda item that is on a significant number of boards in this town, as well as across the Commonwealth. Town planners, EPW directors, other officials provide reports to boards and commissions on a regular basis at their, at their meetings. If you look back at our meeting agendas, or probably ever, you will see at 7:05, or 7 o'clock, I mean, Town Planners Report. I have no idea what is being said in the Town Planners Report, because the Town Planner is giving me a summary of what he's done over the course of time since our last meeting. We don't put any details about the Town Planners Report on there, since we don't know him. I don't know. So it says Town Planners Report. That's what it is. And if he has a meeting with a representative on this project, that's what he reports. With respect to the application, the application has been posted online for everyone to look at. The submission is on the planning board webpage. If you have not seen it, I would suggest you go look at it. I would also ask you to find the word Carvana in the application. They are not the applicants. Brinkman Constructors is the applicant. And so when we advertise that application, we are advertising the name of the applicant, the identity of the property, and what they propose to construct. Now, I am not in the construction business, but my understanding is that this is a pretty standard process for design build for a number of different reasons. But very frequently, the actual identity of the company that is going into a building is not contained in, you know, initial discussions, in applications. And so it gets called Project whatever. In this case, it was called Project Bailey for whatever reason. I have absolutely no idea. And so that is what we are forced to work with. So to file a complaint to say that we needed to put the word Carvana on meeting minutes or an agenda for a Town Planners Report, or even the application, the public notice I got published in the newspaper, I don't know how it's possible that we would first be required to do that, or would do it, because it's not properly showing what is in front of us and what's in the application. Now, with respect to the agendas on, let me get my dates right. It may be April 27. I can't remember which one. There's one in April where we have an informal discussion about the project. And I apologize, I just don't have it right in front of me. And there is the meeting which begins, the public hearing which opened on May 25. Those agenda items, I'm not happy with the way that those were on there, without question. And it's not my decision to determine whether that's an open meeting law violation or someone else's, but I'm not happy with the way they were on there. There's a number of reasons why they ended up that way, but I'm not happy with it. They should have been on there exactly as they are on the planning agenda for tonight, though I would say I shouldn't have put the word Carvana. They should have indicated, over the April discussion, it should have indicated the property address. If at that point in time, we knew the applicant, it should have had that in there and it should have said in it should have indicated what the proposed project was going to be. That should have been the agenda item, in my personal opinion, in April. Should have said, address, applicant if we knew it, informal discussion, and what the proposed project was. The May 25 agenda. Well, first of all, let's start with the notice of public hearing which was published in the newspaper. There is nothing wrong with the notice of public hearing that is published in the newspaper. That is 100% correct and that is how every notice of public hearing is done in this Commonwealth. It lists the name of the applicant, it lists the property, it lists the assessor of the property. It indicates what the proposed use or development is on the property and has a number of other legal requirements. There is no problem with that notice of public hearing. Now, when you get to the agenda item for May 25, again, it got carried over incorrectly and was on there, in my opinion, not to the satisfaction of me. As I said before, it should have listed the actual address of the property. Should have listed the applicant, because we would have known the applicant at that time, which would have been Brinkman Constructors. It should have listed that it was a public hearing and it should have listed that what the proposal was, which, as we put in here, a proposed vehicle processing facility, or the language that was in the public notice, I don't have it right in front of me, whatever language that was, similar to that. That's what should have been on that agenda on May 25, because that's the information that we have. So to the extent that those are problematic, then those are problematic. Now, with regard to the relief that is asked, that is absolutely not appropriate for this situation. This public hearing is open. You all are here. This is a continuation of the public hearing. It was opened on May 25. And I can tell you that on May 25, we spent as much time on this as we were going to spend, because we had a number of other things on that night and it was a long meeting. So we, and it got continued. So the public hearing got continued from May 25 and went to, when was it, June 8? June 8. We then had, and by June 8, I expect everybody in this room had heard of it. It was published in the newspaper on May 27. It was put on Facebook on May 27. I suspect that most people in this room had heard about it at that point in time. However, if you haven't, then that meeting on June 8, where we had a number of people speak. And again, that was, I believe, a three-hour meeting and this is usually about where we cut it off for meeting length. That was continued to today. This public hearing is still open. Everybody in the public still has the ability to offer comments and questions before we reach a decision. So there is absolutely So there is absolutely no prejudice to anyone over what, if, if you consider those open meeting law violations, if they were, there is ultimately no prejudice to anybody because you have the opportunity to make comments and questions during the course of this public hearing. So I respectfully disagree with the relief that's asked with regard to, I don't even know what, but, but delaying the vote and, and having third parties come in and look at everything. So everything has been put up on the website, which by the way, is not required, especially now that town hall is open, but we have done so so that it's easier for people to access it. We have done this by hybrid so that it's easier for people to access it. We are trying to be as accessible as we can. And just understand, you are going to have an opportunity tonight to make comments and ask questions. So, you know, this will be, this is going to be the response that I have to these open meeting law complaints. I'm again, happy to discuss it with the person who submitted them, but that will essentially be my response. If the board has anything to say, I'm happy to pass the mic on. Okay. I think by matter of convenience, given that this is attached to a pedestal here, I'm going to make a motion and I just ask that the board speak loudly. And by the way, we don't have to do roll call votes anymore, so that's good. So I'll probably ask for it in my opinion. But, so I make a motion to designate me to respond to these open meeting law complaints ordered before July 16th. Right here in motion.
Marcus Phelps, make that motion.
Right here.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Okay. Don, is there anything else in the status report? Okay. All right. We are right on planning board time. 7:03. Reorganization of the board. Anybody want to be chair for tonight?
David Sutton.
David Sutton?
Bad idea. Very bad idea.
I'm gonna have to have a motion.
And make a motion. Mike Doherty, be the chair.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You can't say nothing.
Standing?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair.
Oh, you're going to vice.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for Marcus Phelps as Vice Chair.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Standing?
Aye. Is it, is it a bad time to resign?
Okay, we will deal with, we will deal with
We have the CPC, Community Preservation Committee representative, which has been ably filled by David Sina. For the last year, I would renominate him as our representative of Community Preservation Committee.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? All right. What's the fourth one?
We also have liaisons with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We have a commissioner and an alternate. I have been serving as the commissioner.
And you've been doing fantastic work.
Yes, you have.
I will make a motion to appoint Marcus at all.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? We actually have an alternate?
Yes. Alan Schlesler, the town planner, had served in that capacity. So I would nominate John Goddard as the alternate commissioner to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Public comments. Again, I will say this is for
So.
Hold on one minute. I just want to make sure everybody is in Zoom who's waiting. Okay. So public comment, and again, I will say, this is for items that are on, for, that are not on the agenda tonight. If you have an issue that you want to bring to the planning board's attention, that it's not on the agenda tonight, this is the time to do it. So, you know, not to set it up so it's live in Zoom, but I think it's just easier to ask. If there's anybody in person who has a comment, please let me know. Yes, back, back there. Hold on. Do we have microphones? Thank you. And please just state your name and address to start.
Robert Hemmerich, 22 Nolan Road. I'd like an apology. I tried to help you when people, dozens of them, were complaining on Zoom that you were muted and you shut me down and told me it was not the time to ask questions. That was neither a question. It demonstrates you don't care about people in this room and you're not listening to us.
Anybody else have a public comment? Anybody else have a comment, public comment that is not on the agenda tonight?
Okay. Do you have a copy of the original zoning change and what was the date of the change?
And what zoning change per se would you be referring to?
Industrial change.
Okay. Perhaps that may have something to do with an agenda item tonight, do you think?
Yeah, I think it does.
Okay. So why don't we save those? Please, I, I don't, I don't want to play these games all night. I, I really don't. I would like this to go orderly and efficiently as possible. But if we're doing this, and what I'll say tonight is, when we get into public comments for the hearings, all I would ask, I don't, I, I want everybody to be heard. The only thing I ask is that you be respectful in your questions, that your questions be factual or seeking facts, and that you not be repetitive for what someone else had asked tonight. If you want to agree with what they said, you can say, I, I can say your name and address and say, I agree with that person. That is fine, but I want to try to be as efficient and let as many people speak tonight as they can. The other thing I'm going to ask is that you ask one question, we can discuss it, move on to someone else. If you have something else to add, we'll come back around and we'll do it again. Okay? We get, we have time to do it, so.
I get a chance to ask those three questions?
You get a chance to ask questions tonight, okay? Anybody else have a public comment for something that is not on the agenda tonight?
I'd like to know what your experience is as being the chairman of this planning board.
Can we get a name?
Name and address.
Did you tell your name and address?
Sorry, my name is Sue Porter and I live at 9 Fowl Street Road. And what is your experience being on this planning board?
I don't even remember dates and you can certainly consult with, whether it's annual town reports or election results or whatever else, town documents. I think in 2014, when'd you get on? 13?
Yes.
I think it was 14. I got on as an alternate member. That year, the following year, became a full-time member. Became a vice chair, 2016 maybe, 17, something like that. And then I honestly don't know how long I've been chair. At least three years. I don't know how I became a chair. Just as you saw today, I got voted to be the chair. I was saying, I don't know how long it was. I honestly don't remember. It was 18, something like that. It was Ross Terry who was the chair before me and then I became the chair after that. I honestly don't remember the year. It's been a number of years now. So I've been on the board, like I said, about seven years.
What is your legal experience with dealing with the planning board?
I am not a layman's attorney. Anybody else have a public comment or question that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, anybody on Zoom, I apologize if I missed anybody, but is there anybody on Zoom that has public comment that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I see one hand raised. Is it Juliet Hanson? If you can unmute yourself, you can ask her comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
More of a comment than a complaint or anything. I've served on many boards and thank you for, thank you for serving on this and thanks to, thanks to all the planning board members. I know we may not agree on many things, but I just want to encourage people to put this problem on the other side of all of us. We all can be on one side and the problem the other and we'll discover how to solve that problem, but let's not put the problem between us and let's be really cordial. It's really difficult to be on these committees. And, you know, whether we agree or disagree, I, I just want to encourage everybody to really be cordial. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name is Pat Talbot. I live on Bungalow Street and I've been involved with safety for several years. And I don't believe the exit door should be locked as fast as it is. Safety violations have anybody right to think in front of them.
Can't hear her.
Hold on, please. We just needed to change my mic.
My name is Pat Talbot. I live on Bungalow Street and when I worked, I was involved with safety and I don't believe that the exit door should be blocked with people or anything either standing or sitting in front of it.
So if there are seats out here, please let people know. Otherwise, I really don't know what else to tell you as far as room. If everybody can try to figure out a way in, that would be great. I know we, just for, you know, if, if safety is an issue, we do have police and I believe there may be a fire official here tonight, so, you know, I think that I hope they are moving back and stuff. I expect that they are and I think that there won't be any issues here tonight. But if everybody can try to move in and make room, that would be great. Any other public comments? Yes? Make sure you state your name and address first, please.
Ellen Redd. I live at 155 St. Road in Southwood Fire Station. I know two people on the board I've known for quite a long time. So my comment is, my, my question is, and I don't know if it's on the agenda because I don't have a reference here, but I've lived in this town for a very, very long time and I've seen it grow and I love living here because of the view and the open spaces and the wonderful people that are in this town. So my question is, something like a Carvana would definitely have
No, no, I'm sorry. I, I, Carvana's on the agenda, Carvana's on the agenda tonight. So we will deal with that when it comes time.
Okay, sorry. This is understood.
Anybody else have a public comment for tonight that is not on the agenda?
Could you please stop wasting the little time that you're going to buy these ridiculousness to get on with it?
You have a public comment, ma'am? Hold on, please. We need your name, name and address. No, the people on Zoom can't hear you, so I apologize, but you're gonna need that.
Nevermind, it's 6 Star Garage or something. I just have a question. Is this just gonna go like a cut and stop at three hours? Because I see that you put an item on the agenda, very last thing and you know that most of the people, all the people, I could probably say, in this room are interested in the last thing that you put on the agenda. So my question is, are you going to sit there with us and, and stay for the duration so we can?
Would it be possible to move that last item forward?
The answer to that is no. So So here's what I'm gonna say and I'm gonna say this now and, you know, hopefully we don't have to address this issue later on. I've been on this board for seven years. I know a lot of you folks are coming to your first meeting with the board and may not be aware of the process of it and I appreciate you coming and this is exactly what we want, frankly. We want people to come out and give feedback. Let me try to explain how this process goes and hopefully that will calm any fears that you will not be heard tonight or perhaps another night on the issues you want to be heard on. So the way, at least I have run public hearings since I've been the chair of this board, is as follows. We open the public hearing. The applicant makes their presentation. I then turn it to the board to see if the board has any questions about what the applicant has presented. And to the extent there needs to be an interactive discussion about that, that is held at that point in time. What I will do next is open it up to any town officials or members of boards and commissions in town. If they have any questions or comments on the application, they can do that then. Again, we usually have an interactive discussion if there are questions or comments to try to get, you know, if necessary, to get answers to information or answers to questions that they may have. After town officials, I will then go to open it up for public comments and questions with the one caveat that if something of, you know, if there's been a lot of substance discussed with the town officials, I may go back to the board if they have more questions because ultimately they are the ones deciding it, so I want to make sure they have their opportunities throughout this to ask the questions that they feel they need. However, I will then get to the public comments and questions. We will go through and everybody who has something to say will be able to say it. With a hearing that is this size, again, the only thing that I ask, and if you go around to other hearings, you will find that you will have a timeline. People will say, you have two minutes, you have three minutes to ask your question or comment and that is all you get. You know, I try to be a little bit more interactive and I'm sure people are not unhappy about it, but I do try my best to try to resolve any questions or comments that come out there and work through them as we're here. And if we need to continue the hearing to another date to allow everybody to have their say, then we will do that. What I ask again is that you treat this process respectfully. You ask questions that are respectful, that are factual or seeking facts, and then you not be repetitive. I, you know, I was at the select board meeting last night and and what jumped out to me was I heard a question recited word for word. That is, I do not want that to happen here tonight. It doesn't accomplish anything. You know, I, I, I know that people want to say their piece and if someone says something and you agree and you want to say that same thing, just say I agree with that person, but our, our job is to try to get facts and evidence in here to allow us to make a decision under the bylaws of the town of Southwood. That is our job. That is what we are trying to do and we will take as much information as we can get from you folks, but I like to do it in a, in a proper manner, okay? So we have an agenda. There are rules that apply to boards as far as following the agenda. We need to go in order and we certainly can't start an eight o'clock meeting or eight o'clock continuation of a public hearing at 7:53. And that's, that would be number 11 open meeting by law, law violation that we would get, so I can't do that. We have an agenda. We will run through it. If it helps anybody, at least one of these items is going to need to continue here tonight. So we can, staff will get dealt with on another night. So, but the reality is, is that when things get continued, you'd have to put it on to an open spot at the next meeting. It doesn't always end up to be the first spot, so we have other things that come forth besides this one application. So with that having been said, I'd like to move on to what's in front of us, which is the 707 continued hearing on special permit for parcel 2.1 Sodom Mountain Road. Which, where you have the agenda, you can see it's a request for a special permit sufficient to construct a single family home within the agricultural conservation. Do we have the applicant here today? Put your name and association.
Hi, my name is Jessica Allen. I'm a part of Lebec Associates. Get closer to the mic. Put my video on so people at home can see as well.
Jessica, if you need to.
Is this better? Perfect. My name is Jessica Allen. I'm a part of Lebec Associates. We're here tonight for continuation for a special permit application for a single family home on Sodom Mountain Road. Last time you were here before you, we reviewed the site plan. It has been before the conservation commission. It is still within the conservation commission, but the only changes to the plan at this point have been some wetland boundary modifications and some discussion with the commission regarding restoration. In essence, the plan itself hasn't been changed very much. The location of the house remains the same. So what we'd like to ask the board is to render a decision tonight for the, for the use, which is for this special permit and let the continuation of the tweaking for the restoration and the wetland boundaries continue with the conservation commission.
So my inclination, and this is typically how we've treated these, which is if it's still in conservation, I tend to want to continue it out in case it changes because this is a site plan approval. I mean, if it was just a special permit, then for use, you know, we could vote on it. However, my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I can take a look at the application. It said it's a request for a special permit, site plan approval and stormwater, yeah, stormwater management.
The application I have before me just says special permit. My understanding is that was just a special permit for the use? I believe the stormwater piece might be handled by the conservation commission. If you would like to enable the ability to share, I can share on the screen notes with one of the board members.
No, that's fine. I, I just want to, I just looked quickly at the ad. I thought it was in there, but let me look at the application and let me look again at what the AC zone requires when.
I didn't see you work this anymore. Oh, I didn't realize you were saying.
If you need a stormwater permit, we can do separately, but we don't need to process a special for a stormwater permit.
No, I'm not, I don't know what, I, that may have been an error in the stormwater, but I, I'm not aware of anything that would allow a special permit without a special approval. I think those two sections are tied together and so whenever you request a special permit, no matter, you know, however it's, it's delivered, referred to in section 11 as, or in chapter 11 and so on, or 1511 as you can have special permits for single family residences, but when you get that special permit, you need a site plan approval on that as well. So, you know, again, I, I don't think. So my, you know, like I said, we've done in the past, my inclination is simply just finalize it with conservation and then we can, you know, approve the permit. I, I don't, if it's not finalized in conservation, there's not going to be anything going on anyways. So, and we do meet, you know, pretty regularly, so, you know, we can take care of that once, once it is, but I don't remember any big issues in the initial public hearing when it, when it showed up, though I'm sure it's deeper.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would we have the opportunity to close this hearing and then move to making the decision next?
I would say no, because the site plan, if it changes, would not be part of the evidence for the public hearing. And so I think you have to keep the public hearing open until such a time as the site plan gets finalized with conservation and that, you know, it's the same thing that we have and you just need to tell us and if it's not, then you have to submit the revised version and then we can finalize it on our end, so.
Okay, understood. We're due.
I'm happy to put it over. What do you? Yeah, until the next. I will continue it over to 7:07 on July 13.
Marcus Phelps, make the motion to continue this public hearing until July 13, 7:07 PM.
Richard Osing, one second.
You're welcome. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 7:10 PM, planning board time. We have 4151 John Mason Road, which is a special permit modification request. Continued public hearing petition to a man of commercial recreation special permit and we want this golf center. We have received, did you print it out? We have received a request from the applicant for a continuance. I'll read it into the record. Just make sure I didn't do anything. I should have been done on. Everybody on Zoom can still hear me?
Mike.
Yes. Something got hit and that's why I wanted to make sure that I. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That work? No. Any people on Zoom hear me now?
We can still hear you. You're fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we received this email from the applicant here, planning board. Please consider this request to continue the public hearing scheduled for June 29th for 4151 John Mason Road, the next planning board meeting. Some of our project team will be on vacation and unavailable. We have any questions, let me know. Brett Brown, Brendan, this is awesome. Why we, but we'll continue it. We're here to motion to continue it to 7:35 on July 13.
Mr. Chairman, before I make the motion, I wanted to mention the plan. I don't know if he was involved in the last discussion of this particular item, but I believe chapter 18532 trailers is applicable to this modification because they're proposing to use a trailer and that was not in the original application, I don't believe, as a reference. It's a modification of a special permit that was issued a few years back now, 2016. Anyway, we need to make sure the board helps that's involved in this and certifies that the use of a trailer is appropriate. What time is the?
7:35.
So I make the motion to continue this hearing until July 13th at 7:35.
13th of 50. Richard, also your second motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. 7:30 PM, 42 Depot Street. Special permit site plan approval, earth excavation, special permit and stormwater permit applications. Public hearing for petition for the construction of a 100 unit residential development in a residential 28 zone.
Evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the public, planning board members. Rob Lebeck, I'm a part of Lebec Associates. I would like to, if possible, request a continuance on this tonight for a couple of reasons. One, we just today received comments related to the BBW review. And also, secondly, because there's so many people in the audience tonight with the Carvana project, we figured it would be logical to facilitate that potentially have this item here on a separate need from the Carvana meeting. Because they aren't fairly sizable projects, it seems logical. So if it, if it pleases the board, we respectfully request a continuance on 42 Depot Street with a certain, that works for the board idea, same night as Carvana.
So my suggestion is this, as I'm looking at everything. My suggestion is as a holding spot to move it to 13 right now and have a discussion about whether we are going to change the schedule in any way to try to work through the backlog that we have as far as adding a meeting in, in July or in possibly August, because I don't know. So that would be my suggestion and let's just move this over to July 13th again as sort of a holding place and then we can kind of, we need to continue it, we can do so.
Mr. Chairman, we do, I do believe that there is a special permit that's required related to the One Direction district. So if, I don't believe we'll be able to advertise that before the August meeting. It's not July. So, so we'd like to be continued in August.
But if that's fine. When is the first August meeting? Okay, okay, okay. You're right. I forgot about that, the wellhead issue. So we might as well, to track them, I know, deal with it on one shot. Okay.
There's no clock, Mike. We haven't started the open hearing, so.
No, I, I understand. I simply, because we can't obviously put it on, say, July 27th, since we don't have a meeting right now, I just wanted to at least have a placeholder next month for next meeting and then deal with it, but, but Rob has a good point, which is that that they have to run an application for the wellhead. That needs to be advertised and so and we have to combine what's been opened already with the wellhead and so we might as well do that on August 10. So. I'm sorry. August 10. Oh, we can zoom in or we can figure it out. Okay. But that's fine. You can still, you can still listen to the minutes and yes, no, that's fine. Okay. All right, so August 10. All right, August 10, we will put it on for 7:01. Do I hear a motion?
So.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, standing.
Standing.
I had an aye on that one, too. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
7:40 PM. Parcel 2 Hudson Drive, earth excavation special permit renewal, which is a review of the engineering report submitted with the appliance with existing special permit for this facility. You guys might want to get, you know, closer to the podium. Whoever's going to speak, just be close to the mic. If only one of you is, that's fine. I still need to read the public notice, but wanted you to introduce yourselves and who you're associated with and then I'll read the public notice.
Everyone hear me off that?
At the end, we need to be turned on and hold it off to you.
Members of the commission, my name is Scott Johnson, I'm the engineer from Post Johnson Miller in Connecticut. With me is Mr. Chris Costello of Tilcon.
Sir, you may have to, as you're speaking, just hold up the mic a little bit closer to your mouth so that everybody can hear. But let me just read the notice of public hearing and then we'll get to to the request. Notice of public hearing for Tuesday, June 29th, 2021, 7:40 PM, Hudson Drive. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 11, that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 29th, 2021 at 7:40 PM in the land use hearing room, Town Hall 454 College Highway, on an application of Tilcon Inc. for the renewal of the earth excavation special permit for the property located in Hudson Drive, Zone Industrial Restricted and Agricultural Conservation. The property is shown on a set with map 42, parcel 2. The applicant proposes to construct to renew the earth excavation. to renew the earth excavation special permit issued to Tilcon Inc. In accordance with the code of software zoning by law, chapter 185, sections 19, 22, and 33. Should any Massachusetts legislation, this patient being an online teleconference in his own information on how to join will be posted within the meeting agenda at the software town hall. A copy of the application and plans may be inspected by contacting the interim town planer, Tom Carter, at his email address. Any person considered wishing to convert on the application could appear at the time designated by authority to a person's software planning board. Okay, so if you want to offer the presentation, I'm going to go with that.
Okay, thank you. So I think you're all familiar with the site. Basically, it's located north of the code of South Hudson Drive and basically south of Shaker Farms Country Club. This is our biannual renewal of the excavation permit. Our, our firm went out to the site in April 2021. Site survey by drone, did a field inspection. We updated the site mapping, associated engineering report submitted to town staff review. Basically, most of the activity is confined to the northern portion of the Tilcon parcel. And, and most of this activity can basically be summed up as storage of stockpile material from the excavation activity that's occurring on the property just to the north. And that activity also uses Tilcon tall roads to access Hudson Drive. There's no fixed machinery on the site. There's no washing or crushing. There's a portable screener on the property to the north. If you're familiar with the map or had a chance to review it, the shaded areas basically represent areas that have previously been restored. There's no major changes from the 2019 plan. Tilcon does the monthly groundwater monitoring for that two-year period between renewals. They supply us that information. Basically, the, between the test wells, in each, the groundwater was slightly higher, but in consistent with historic readings. Ensured to find it's been renewed for an additional two-year period. For that, I think that's end of my comments. Mr. Costello and I, if you have any internal questions.
Let me just ask the town interim town planner. You kind of transitioned a little bit, but there's something you need to pay attention to, the attention of the board.
Something is, is ordered in this before.
And I'll have that hopefully in the hand, if you guys can see there's a hand up there. So pan around and show you guys what we're talking about. So on the north, left corner of the property, there is a that's Tannery Road, okay? And then, um, further to the left is the Tannery Road and College Highway. And then heading south is College Highway, so that's College Highway. We also have on the other side of the property, um, we've got a bike track. So if you look there, definitely that's a bike track. So this is a property that consists of three separate parcels, uh, total of approximately 137 acres. That 137 acres includes a significant amount of land that is undevelopable along the road, uh, which is the variety of street in Massachusetts, right, in town with like 200 foot riverfront area. Uh, there is also a large, basically the weather out in front of the property, uh, that is delineated. So just to give you a little bit of background, what we've done so far. We've done a full, this is a digital survey, public survey, and weather elimination of the property. From there, we submitted what's called an ANRAD with the Conservation Commission to determine the wetland boundaries. So those are all set. And we have designed the project to stay out of any jurisdictional areas. So jurisdictional under the state regulations from a wetlands protection standpoint, as well as, uh, out of any jurisdictional areas related to the Town of Southwick's bylaw. So within that 37, I'm sorry, 137 acres, we're proposing a 200,000 square foot facility. It's for Carvana. It is a processing facility for their vehicles. So what happens is there's essentially two lines within the building. I won't get into too much detail because I don't want to steal the thunder of the Carvana representatives. But basically what they do is they process vehicles for sale. So they take used cars, so Carvana's is used cars, take them in, they will detail them, clean them up, touch them up, and then basically run them through that line, wash them. And then they have what they would call a carousel that they'll take pictures and then they get posted online. This proposed facility will have a, um, a class two car sales license, but it is not going to have any car sales happen on site. So on site, it will be strictly the processing of vehicles and then the storage of those vehicles. Now, the subject property, if you're familiar, and I'm sure most, all of you are, the subject property has frontage on College Highway, as you can see. There's approximately a 300 foot strip that we've decided to not go into, okay? So, so along College Highway, there will be a 300 foot strip that is separate from our project. Our project will not go into that. It's been done for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to make sure that we were clean away from that wetland. And two, we were worried about the visual impact to the surrounding neighborhood. And that wetland at the top corner, right there, as well as leaving that strip of land, 300, approximately 300 feet back from College Highway, will render this very, very hard to see. So we're also proposing, and I'll get into that later, but we're proposing some significant landscaping to buffer and burn. So what you'll see from the corner of College Highway and Tannery, and what you'll see from College Highway will be very minimal. This is a single story building, so this is not a very tall building. It's approximately 26 feet tall. And then they, you know, they run the vehicles through that. The rest of the site that you see there, those rectangles, those are storage for cars. So that's what those are. And there's different areas that they store cars. Work in progress, um, ready line, which is essentially something that's already been through. It's ready for sale. Somebody buys it online and then it gets trucked offsite. So there is two different types of vehicles they use for transporting the, um, the ready vehicles. Uh, there's a car carrier type of vehicle. And there is also a stinger, which is a kind of a single car carrier. So they use those. And those, we'll get into the details of kind of the, you know, the trip generation, the traffic in a little bit. But generally speaking, that's, that's what they use. There's also a significant number of employees. This is a really interesting economic generator for the area. There will be about four to 600 new jobs created, uh, for this facility once it, once it's built out. They anticipate that they will start with approximately a 25% uh, function of the building. And then over the next three to five years, we'll ramp up to 100%. So we'll talk a lot about that as we go forward. But generally speaking, at the top of the page, if, um, you'll see that there's a parking area. That's dedicated for employees. Uh, just below that is an area dedicated for the car carriers. There's stinger parking as well in that general vicinity. And then the rest is either ready line or work in progress and those types of things. So, am I going to go to the landscape plan? And then the rest is either ready line or work in progress and those types of things. So, am I going to go to the landscape plan? And then the rest is either ready line or work in progress and those types of things. So, you know, the project itself is, you know, something that has been contemplated by Carvana. We've worked closely, um, with, you know, with the town, came in informally, we talked to them about it. We are very aware of all of the potential impacts. And I'm sure you'll have a lot of questions about those. Specifically, I know that there was questions about traffic. I know there was questions about, uh, traffic down Tannery. We can address that tonight. We can address a lot of how, how the trips we distributed. We have all of that information. But generally speaking, where we're at in the process is we've had an informal meeting with the planning board to discuss the project. Uh, we've worked with the town to understand with Randy Brown and some others from the, from the town, to understand the infrastructure questions. I know that there's a lot of questions that people have about water. I can actually talk about that in a second. And, you know, I know there's impacts, worried about impacts about water and, and traffic. I think those are probably the big things. And obviously I know there's a question about loss of farmland. The property is zoned industrial restricted. What that means is you're allowed to develop a property like this for this purpose at some point. And I don't know the details. I think somebody had asked that. When, when the property was zoned industrial, but it's been industrial for a long time. A few years back, there was another proponent that came to town. They were looking, um, to do a large warehouse facility. It was not a job generator. I think there was about 10 jobs that were being created. In this particular situation, this is a, probably a smaller building. There is a fairly large site being developed, but there will be a lot of jobs created. We don't have or need a lot of services from the town, but let's talk about water for a second. So this will generate initially approximately six to 7,000. I believe it's, let me just confirm my numbers here. Uh, I'm sorry, about seven, 7,500 to 9,000 gallons per day at opening. I know that there's a question about, uh, what happened last year with the water. Obviously, we had the pandemic. Everybody's home, everybody's watering their lawns. That was a concern. The, uh, Town of Southwick Board of Water Commissioners had put a moratorium on large projects. So we've been working and communicating with them regarding this project. The good news about this project is that there is an infrastructure, um, upgrade that was, that was voted on at town meeting, which will give, according to, uh, DPW, will give the, the needed amount of water for not only the residents and making sure that every, all the users have water, but obviously that this facility and some, some of the other projects that are coming forward have the proper water and have everything they need. As a backup plan, if we need it, we have the ability to do a well. We can do a well on site that would withdraw water. We're pretty close to the aquifer. A little bit of our property is on the aquifer. But we would be able to withdraw so that there would not be an issue related to water. So if for some reason, there, and you can imagine somebody developing a facility like this wants to make sure that they have a backup plan. So there is a backup plan for water. So rest assured that those folks out there that are concerned about, you know, water bans and other issues related to water, this project, while we would like town water and we would likely have at least a domestic supply for, you know, people in, in the, um, you know, in the bathrooms and that, that type of thing. The processed water that will need to run the process of this facility, because there's some, uh, car washes, et cetera. Those will certainly could be run off of, off of the well. So that's, that's one item. I think there was, the other item was, was traffic. And I'll get, I'll kind of do a cursory discussion about it. And then we can get into the details. Mr. Fergel, as I mentioned this year, and he's a traffic engineer and is focused on this project for quite some time now. So with regard to traffic, and I don't know if we have a better graphic about, uh, for the intersection of Tannery and College Highway, or Google Earth, maybe, you know? Trying to see if we can get a Google Earth image. But basically, at Tannery and College Highway, about a decade ago, the tractors, I think it's about a decade, tractor supply was developed. When tractor supply was developed, they were required to put money into a mitigation fund because the town had determined that the trip generation associated with that project would arguably require a signal at that intersection. So as we started contemplating our project, we looked at what was going on. Mass DOT has a very early stage, I call it a design project at this point, but a very early stage design project to look at College Highway and that general vicinity. So we, we started looking at that, looking at what's around. And as it exists now, and as determined by the planning board about a decade ago, that intersection needs upgrades. So those upgrades have been looked at. They, you know, I won't get into all the details right now, but basically we've discussed with the town that we would, that the project proponent would be willing to do, uh, pay, pay mitigation fees, their portion, because it's already required, it already trips the threshold. Obviously, the project that went, we did it, we did that one too, the project in, at a Southwick Country Club. You know, the development of the Family Dollar, I think it's Family Dollar. And some of these other facilities have certainly sent it over the threshold. So as we develop, we will certainly have impacts. So we want to make sure those impacts are addressed properly. So we anticipate a significant mitigation fee payment to the town to upgrade that intersection. So that's, we'll get into the detail on that later when the questions come up. The other piece of this is that as you look down Tannery, there was questions about people, whether or not people will go down Tannery or whether trucks would go down Tannery. So we can completely control and have, and are more than willing to accept the condition that any truck traffic would have to go out onto College Highway. When they go out on the College Highway, they obviously have unrestricted movement north and south. But there's no reason, and anybody who's driven down Tannery knows that you're not going to want to bring a stinger truck or you're not going to want to bring a car carrier across that curve where the little culvert is down towards the corner. It's just not, not even remotely feasible. So obviously there, the drivers of these trucks, uh, which are not significant, if you look at them throughout the day and how minimal they'll be, you're getting a lot more truck traffic in, uh, from Sam West Road there, uh, from a lot of those construction companies and landscape companies, um, who are all local great people. Uh, but a lot of that traffic that you see there in kind of the beat, the beat up portion of the road, uh, is due to that traffic. So who's? I'm just going to hold for one second. I guess Zoom is gone, so I don't, I don't want to talk again.
So going back to what I was saying, as you look down Tannery, I know there was a lot of questions about truck traffic. So that's one thing. So I just talked about that. There will be no truck traffic down Tannery. There's an entrance proposed, go back to the site plan, there's an entrance proposed at the Tannery Road curb cut. That's actually directed on an angle towards College Highway. Everybody would be educated that drives these. There's no other independent truck drivers that would drive in this area. Uh, or I'm sorry, drive for Carvana. It's all their own vehicles and all their own drivers. So you don't have to worry about people not knowing where to go or getting lost and going down Tannery. So that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is a question about, you know, who's coming to the site that's going to work there. So four to 600 people is a lot of people. Uh, it's a great job generator, uh, but it's also a traffic generator and we're aware of that. So I believe the numbers are about five to 10% based on the trip allocation for that intersection and where people were coming, are coming from based on the arterial, arterial roadways, et cetera. So you may have some additional traffic, but it's pretty minimal. And it would be, well, let me rephrase that. You would have, you would have five, 5% of the traffic might go down, approximately 5% of the traffic might go down Tannery. Oh, I'm sorry, come from Tannery as it going to and from more, such and such. So I'm glad I could give you that. So with, with that, so, so that's that. So if we could just go to the Google Earth one more time, I just want to show everybody what they can expect for visibility. Because Google Earth is pretty helpful in understanding what kind of screening there will be. So within that 37, I'm sorry, 137 acres, we're proposing a 200,000 square foot facility. It's for Carvana. It is a processing facility for their vehicles. So what happens is there's essentially two lines within the building. I won't get into too much detail because I don't want to steal the thunder of the Carvana representatives. But basically what they do is they process vehicles for sale. So they take used cars, so Carvana's is used cars, take them in, they will detail them, clean them up, touch them up, and then basically run them through that line, wash them. And then they have what they would call a carousel that they'll take pictures and then they get posted online. This proposed facility will have a, um, a class two car sales license, but it is not going to have any car sales happen on site. So on site, it will be strictly the processing of vehicles and then the storage of those vehicles. Now, the subject property, if you're familiar, and I'm sure most, all of you are, the subject property has frontage on College Highway, as you can see. There's approximately a 300 foot strip that we've decided to not go into, okay? So, so along College Highway, there will be a 300 foot strip that is separate from our project. Our project will not go into that. It's been done for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to make sure that we were clean away from that wetland. And two, we were worried about the visual impact to the surrounding neighborhood. And that wetland at the top corner, right there, as well as leaving that strip of land, 300, approximately 300 feet back from College Highway, will render this very, very hard to see. So we're also proposing, and I'll get into that later, but we're proposing some significant landscaping to buffer and burn. So what you'll see from the corner of College Highway and Tannery, and what you'll see from College Highway will be very minimal. This is a single story building, so this is not a very tall building. It's approximately 26 feet tall. And then they, you know, they, they run the vehicles through that. The rest of the site that you see there, those rectangles, those are storage for cars. So that's what those are. And there's different areas that they store cars. Work in progress, um, ready line, which is essentially something that's already been through. It's ready for sale. Somebody buys it online and then it gets trucked offsite. So there is two different types of vehicles they use for transporting the, um, the ready vehicles. There's a car carrier type of vehicle. And there is also a stinger, which is a kind of a single car carrier. So they use those. And those, we'll get into the details of kind of the, you know, the trip generation, the traffic in a little bit. But generally speaking, that's, that's what they use. There's also a significant number of employees. This is a really interesting economic generator for the area. There will be about four to 600 new jobs created, uh, for this facility once it, once it's built out. They anticipate that they will start with approximately a 25% uh, function of the building. And then over the next three to five years, we'll ramp up to 100%. So we'll talk a lot about that as we go forward. But generally speaking, at the top of the page, if, um, you'll see that there's a parking area. That's dedicated for employees. Uh, just below that is an area dedicated for the car carriers. There's stinger parking as well in that general vicinity. And then the rest is either ready line or work in progress and those types of things. So, am I going to go to the landscape plan? At this point in time, rather than over the board. But if the board asks us sort of the questions that they, they want to ask and deal with now, I'm, uh, you know, this, this is, I, this is the way I would like to do it. And I've always done it, so I, I have no problem if you want to, but, um, okay, Marcus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have just one question regarding the impervious surface. On the plan, it shows an area with 5,400 cars. I'd appreciate an indication of how many square feet of impervious service will be contained there. Where I'm going is, uh, under our solar bylaw, we have a decommissioning process where an installation has to post a bond to cover the cost of decommissioning a site if the actual site operator does not do it. Because in the future, as we go forward, 20 years from now, or whatever, if this facility is no longer there, as far as the building and the surrounding impervious service, that would probably get reutilized by some other company. But the storage area, the 5,400 car storage area, to me, would not be needed by, say, another company that would come in there. So my thought is to get that number, square footage, to do a calculation, what it costs to restore per square foot, an asphalt covered area. And that would then result in a bond figure that we could put in as a condition when we issue, if we do issue a special permit for this project. So that's one of the key items, at least at this point. I think there's a number there I still don't have. I talked to our planner a little bit about it, but I think that, that is something from a planning standpoint. I am a professional planner. You need to look into the future and things change. This facility may evolve in some way, I don't know. But anyway, that, that's my concern at this point.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Great comment, questions? So there's 60, I'm sorry, 65.7 acres of impervious on site and approximately 47% total parcel. And that is a logical request, obviously, a facility like this, as you can imagine, to drive, drive in movie theaters that aren't utilized anymore. There's obviously a sea of asphalt, so we understand, we understand.
Yeah, I'm looking not for the whole area to be restored or rehabilitated, but mainly that eastern area where all the cars store. So it's going to be a number less than what you said, but it'll be a number of some kind that we need to have to do a calculation.
We'd be happy to work that out, thank you.
I've got a question for you. Along those lines, Rob, along, along, along those lines, you talked about the movement of the parking lot. Now, you had mentioned that as you're going forward, you're going to be starting our probably 25% capacity, moving as you go forward, probably increasing as you go. Yes. What's the likelihood that maybe we could just simply stage the lot? Start with 30%. And if your, your, your business begins to develop and increase, match the lot to the size of the company. So if you get to a point where you start to stagnate and you go, okay, you know, we ended up being 60, 70%, that's where we're going to stay, then there's no reason to pave the rest of the area. That would save you some money and probably help some folks out here.
So in recent, uh, what we've seen is the sites grow at a capacity that fluctuates based on regions and demand. And it's very hard to judge at what rate that the site is going to grow. For us operationally, it's best for us to, uh, understand what our, what our need is based on current regions and market. And what we've developed so far in our design is what we feel we're going to utilize once we're at full.
And that's, that's, that's at five years?
Well, yes.
Is there something you can look at, maybe get back to me on?
It is something we can explore, definitely.
Are we, um, from the Zoomers part, allowed to say something?
Any other board members have questions?
No, no.
Yeah, um, I think actually three questions here. You talked to the open field that's adjacent to College Highway, um, and the tree line and the 300 foot upper. Is the tree line beyond the 300 foot or is it within the 300? So it's, I, I probably have to show you the plan and kind of describe it a little bit better. But generally speaking, there's that 300 foot strip is fairly clear, other than the isolated weather, which has a buffer zone to it, has wooded areas around that. So that whole corner will remain. If somebody pursues a project up front, uh, which likely would happen at some point, then that area right there on the corner is probably a viable pass site to the left, yeah, right there. And then you can see how the wetland juts out into that 300 foot area. That will all remain vegetated unless someone gets a permit to go into that area. Generally speaking, these are pretty restricted areas, uh, certainly can't go into the wetland. Uh, as far as the rest of it itself, there are trees out front, uh, right now. But I think realistically, at some point, those will probably be cut by someone else, not us. And then that's why we have that strip where we have a burn, significant plantings. We're happy to, you know, look closely at that for the planners and landscape architect and, you know, provide whatever needs to be provided. The burn and the plantings are not presently, obviously, burn, not there, but even the plants and trees, that's not presently there, but will be outside of 300 feet. Correct. We have it just beyond that area. We expect that that 300 foot would be separated off and, you know, somebody else might pursue something.
What's the height of where?
About six to seven, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, about 7 feet. And if it needed to be increased, if there was a concern, we can certainly, we can explore that. Well, we have, you have the burn, that's the earth and burn, and then we have, you know, we have a pretty, pretty sized tree buffer. Impossible to build from visuals.
So, in recent, we've had those situations. I'm sorry. So, in recent builds, we've had situations where we looked at phasing the different stages of the project and building out the ready line lots at different stages. What we've seen is the sites grow at a capacity that fluctuates based on regions and demand. And it's very hard to judge at what rate that the site is going to grow. For us, operationally, it's best for us to understand what our, what our need is based on current regions and market. And what we've developed so far in our design is what we feel we're going to utilize once we're at full.
And that's, that's at five years?
Well, yes.
Is there something you can look at, maybe get back to me on?
It is something we can explore, definitely.
Are we, from the Zoomers' part, allowed to say something?
We'll get to the public in a moment, please. Any other board members have questions?
No.
Yeah. I think actually three questions here. You talked to the open field that's adjacent to College Highway, and the tree line, and the 300-foot buffer. Is the tree line beyond the 300-foot, or is it within the 300? So, it's, I probably have to show you the plan and kind of describe it a little bit better. But generally speaking, there's that 300-foot strip is fairly clear, other than the isolated wetland, which has a buffer zone to it, has wooded areas around that. So that whole corner will remain. If somebody pursues a project out front, which likely would happen at some point, then that area right there on the corner is probably a viable pad site to the left, yeah, right there. And then you can see how the wetland juts out into that 300-foot area. That will all remain vegetated unless someone gets a permit to go into that area. Generally speaking, these are pretty restricted areas, certainly can't go into the wetland more likely. As far as the rest of it itself, there are trees out front right now, but I think realistically, at some point, those will probably be cut by someone else, not us. And then that's why we have that strip where we have a burn, significant plantings, we're happy to, you know, look closely at that with a planner, some landscape architect, and, you know, provide whatever needs to be provided. The burn of the plantings are not presently, obviously, they're not there, but the trees, that's not presently there, but will be outside of 300 feet. Correct. We have it just beyond that area, and we expect that that 300-foot would be separated off, and, you know, somebody else might pursue something. What's the height of where? About six to seven, I can't, I'm, I'm, about 7 feet. And if it needed to be increased, if there was a concern, we can certainly. I'd want to explore that, I think. Well, we have the, that's the earth and air, and then we have, we have a pretty sizable tree buffer, impenetrable from visuals. 26 feet? You said that the water usage was, oh, I'm sorry. Start at 7,500 to 9,000 gallons a day, that's representative of like 25% capacity. Do we want to go linearly from there? Yeah, the possibility, there's a possibility to go up to about 25, 1,000 gallons per day. Just to clarify, as mentioned, if for some reason there's a water infrastructure issue, you know, once the upgrades are, we do have, we do have the well, we can, we can, we can pop a well, multiple wells, same area.
Quiet down, please, and let him speak so that everyone can hear.
Thanks. And then the last question is, could you speak to the details of the lighting, next year lighting scheme, specifically activities to mitigate sky glow and? So, for your regulations, pretty much every standard in the state now are required to keep dark sky compliant lighting, downlit, I believe, their LEDs, I'll get the whole light in a second, and we can show you our photovoltaic plan. So what you're required to do is essentially keep all of the light on-site, most of them are shining down, not out. Almost like if you look at Wall Park, those lights, you can see the field, but you can't see outside it, kind of like when I just tried to talk. Right. Lights to be on 24/7, or would be only while you're operating in? During operation, actually, there's security lighting that will remain on, but the lights themselves, is that correct? So there'd be security lighting that stays on, but there are only, only the main lights will be under working operation hours. I'll confirm the hours. Yeah. Thank you.
Much. I have a question.
Make sure you speak, speak.
Other questions? With a place like Intel Mall, which is going out of business, with thousands of strip feet of pavement, why are you coming to Southside?
Let's, 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 the response be heard, please.
Yeah, the, the location was identified for a number of reasons, obviously. Wanted to bring a site that's flat, so industrial restricted, where it is allowed. The mall isn't zoned properly, sorry, I don't think they would necessarily look at that, maybe they don't, but it's not zoned properly, it's obviously a mall. As far, as far as geographic location, the roadways in the area, and where they believe their target market will be, where they can serve, is the reason why the site was selected.
Mike, you all have your opportunity to make comments and ask questions.
Looking, one question. It doesn't have to have anything to do with the tax rate, would it?
So, if you guys want to answer the question, but in all honesty, from my point of view, I'm respectfully, just, I'm not sure how that has to do with bylaws. I appreciate that it's information that people want to know, but at the same time, we have a special permit to consider under the bylaws, and I don't know that that has anything to do with it.
So, so just to clarify, just to clarify, who's here for you this evening, Land Use Consultants? I'm sure Carvana has done a significant amount of research related to, you know, the financial aspects. General Dan wants to speak to that.
Kind of to Rob's point earlier, we've done, we've done numerous studies of this particular site. Tax wasn't a deciding factor in coming here, but our logistics network.
Please be respectful and let her speak.
We've been studying our logistics network, and we have presence in the East, so this would really kind of round out our logistics network, allow us to serve markets that we're already in, and then continue to grow into more markets as well. That's mainly our first one.
Wasn't Texas.
Any other board questions?
My question was in regards to exactly how many hauler vehicles you are expecting in and out of the facility on a daily basis. We've gotten a couple of different numbers based on peak hours. I would like you to know what it is at the beginning at 25%, as well as the expected incoming at 100%.
Great, thank you. So we have that information, and also you have some information that I was waiting on. So, as far as the shift, there's two shifts, it'll be 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and then it would be from 2:00 PM to 10:30 PM. The car hauler trucks, so there are, they call, they haul mining cars, and there's 90 trips, which is really 45 trucks per day at 100% capacity. So, maybe trips would be in them. So, so it's 45 trucks. As far as the fixed body trucks, there would be 20 trips, or 10 trucks per day. So, that would be it.
Please, quiet down and let them speak. You all have your opportunity to speak.
And that's all day. And it's not, so, when you think about traffic, you know, you think about like a dump in the elements or something. You know, I think, no, you think about peak hour trips.
Please let him speak. I don't know why I need to keep saying this. You will have your opportunity to make comments and ask questions, but if you speak over the person who's trying to give you the information, others can't hear it, and we can't hear it, and we can't consider the information that is part of this public hearing. So please respectfully, let them ask the questions that are, answer the questions that are being asked.
Yeah, so there's a distribution of trips throughout the day. Obviously, the car haulers aren't, you know, leaving all at the same time, like you would see in the morning peak, or people going to work, you know, the traffic that you would see at some sort of breakfast place, or, you know, the dump in the elements of space. So, it's spread out throughout the day. So when you're talking about 45 trucks throughout the day, it's pretty, you know, if you do the math, it's pretty, it's pretty minimal in a 16-hour day. So that's 45 trucks in a 16-hour day, it's pretty minimal. You're going to see a lot of traffic out of the St. West, you know, that's probably more significant, depending on the projects that they have come.
And is it my understanding that the vehicles that are being processed, are they test-driven by employees off of the site, and then to make sure they are in de-functioning?
I'll let Jen answer that.
Yes, there will be quality insurance drives that our employees will be handling. We're looking into potentially exploring an alternative, where we wouldn't have to take the vehicle off-site to do those quality insurance drives, and we can handle it on-site. So we're exploring kind of those avenue top teams, because that would be a good fit for this particular project.
So that extra 3,000 pieces that are closer towards the bike trail, like you're saying, might be used for test drives in the future? How many though, until that is possible?
How many?
How many test trips, let's say?
Right now, we have traffic jams that become this for employees, and then, as well as our test drives, so a total number would be 2,000 around.
Okay, so that includes both. Can you clarify the next 2,000 trips per day? Thank you. Can I also just ask, when, I think a lot of people are mostly confused about the decision to, obviously, we understand it's a flat piece, the parcel is different development according to our bylaws, it meets the R zone requirements. However, we are kind of in the middle of nowhere when it comes to main roads and traffic. How does it fit into your strategic plan to locate a distribution facility so, so far from the hubs of distribution in Western Mass, specifically 90, 91? I understand those areas are already built up a lot, but. Outside of Southwood, Refuting Hills, you have to take 1, 2, 3 roads. Right now, 10202 going south towards Ramby and Connecticut Zone, you have a very tiny roundabout that I believe would be appropriate for car haulers. The bridge heading into Westfield, 10202, is currently under construction by expedition. I have a hard time making sure I'm going through clearly, and that we've just heard is anticipating to be a five-year potential project. Additionally, if you were to take a left out onto 10202 instead of going right north and head south, presumably, you were then going to be taking a left to head east on Route 57. Again, that is an intersection that is very busy during most parts of the day. That left-hand turn lane is only large enough for three or four vehicles to be waiting to take a left-hand turn. If you have a hauler there, there is no longer a left-hand turn lane waiting. And then you're bringing those haulers all the way down 57 through a tight intersection and meeting mills, not to mention passing by our schools. So what is your intention about potentially working with the town to make the Hudson Drive-Sam West connection? And what are your thoughts on putting your distribution center here in a location that just doesn't really seem to fit your needs as a business?
That was really just a business institution that we, as we mentioned, that we're getting into itself. This was a parcel that came available to us, met the criteria that we were looking for as far as acreage, met the criteria for internal network, for the justice team, as I mentioned before. So that, that was really just the basis of our business institution when we've come to this.
As far as if we're going to be approving Sam West connection? That part of it, as well as those large trucks and small roads?
Which way? That's the infrastructure that's there. We are, we're the willing partner in providing the improvements and structures if that's required. So we want to be a working member of this, we want to make a partnership with you.
Again, please.
Unfortunately, I can't choose the existing infrastructure that's there now, but we can definitely work towards improvements if that's the case.
Any other board questions? Okay. Town officials and members of other boards and commissions, I did see Mike McMahon first, so we will start him with Mike. And again, Mike, I'm sure he's identified.
Michael McMahon, so you warned me. If this project is built, it should contribute some vacants, and I'd like some specifics. January row, we're talking about some kind of terminal end in the government traffic lane. How much of the cost will Carvana pay? Six or seven years ago, we told you traffic by custom. Percentage of the cost will Carvana pay? Because I have a report kind of almost nothing, and I've heard we'll pay the whole thing.
Thank you. So, absolutely understand the question. So we have been working with a couple of different groups. The town has met the Mass DOT related to that intersection and the improvements that they believe require. So that is something that they have, I'll call it, I don't know what it's called, probably called a schematic or concept plan of what they're anticipating. There has been preliminary numbers put to it early on that, based on some recent review from Mass DOT, they're looking for additional upgrades and additional improvements, bike lanes, complete streets, that type of stuff. So as they go through that, continue to go through that, that number will change. So I don't have a specific number on that, but I do know that we anticipate that this project would contribute a significant amount, or a significant, significant percentage. We haven't discussed percentages, that's something that I believe, based on our discussion with the planning board and with the D W director, that they would determine what our enrollment would be in that, and that would be the condition of whatever permit would be issued. So that said, if we don't meet that mitigation requirement, then the project doesn't get built, or we can't take action. So, Carvana is committed to whatever is required by the town that's fair and equitable, and, you know, this, this will, you know, have an impact. So we want to mitigate that impact, and you understand that the finances of that are not something the town wants to bear, or has the ability to bear. So it's something that we're anticipating that will be a large portion of. We don't know that percent yet, but we are ready, Carvana's ready to, I'm not going to pay for it, but Carvana's ready to, to take here.
Other town officials or board members who have questions? Dennis? So, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Hold on, hold on.
Supraska 1 Logan Lane, what percentage of the waters can be reclaimed and reused?
Testing. Aaron, as a third one. That would be 60% of the process water that would be placed?
So therefore, you're not going to be drawing 25,000, 25,000 gallons every day from the town water supply, right? Because you're going to be using some of that.
So we're exploring options, alternative options, to be the most efficient resource for us as well as for the town. So we're looking at different options, exploring different things that would make sense for us and for the town.
Is that, is that 25,000 gallons washing the toilet, washing your hands?
Yes.
How many employees total when you're running?
We're approximately 450 employees.
One shift. That'll be all shifts, which is.
That's, that's one shift. The second shift that will come in would be the same trouble.
It's supposed to be 900, right? General, I just. What's the total number of employees working one day?
I mean, one day, we're expecting this particular facility to be anywhere from 400 to 500. We won't know the exact numbers until we are able to start including those particular facilities. What Erin was speaking to for Widdy was generally how we plan our facilities, that's the typical number, but that doesn't mean that we're going to fit that number for this particular facility. We don't expect this facility to run at maximum capacity in the typical fashion that our other facilities are. Erin had mentioned 450 per shift, and that's not the case for this facility. We're looking at anywhere from 400 to 600 employees.
Per day?
Per day, yeah, full employees.
Thank you.
So Jen just said anywhere from 400 to 600 employees per day at the facility. That would include both shifts.
Dennis Clark, coordinator for the Southern Conservation Commission. I just had a question. Is it within the planning board's purview to require an environmental impact review done for a project?
Dennis Clark, coordinator for the Southern Conservation Commission. I just had a question. Is it within the planning board's purview to require an environmental impact review done for a project with this magnitude?
So.
Is someone talking? We can't hear at all on Zoom.
I'm not talking yet, so can you hear me now? On Zoom?
Yes, now we can.
So Dennis, I would say that the bylaw that would most directly apply and allow us to do that is one that is not in effect currently. If you may recall, at the town meeting, we passed a bylaw that would allow the town to require applicants to pay, you know, reasonable fees for consultants that they needed. That is not in effect and wasn't in effect at the time of the application. I could certainly reach out to town council, but I think that that would not be something that we could use for this particular application.
Well, if you could look into that because information that was provided to the state was given to them by Carvana. And, you know, I think if if you had in your purview, your applicant request to due diligence the project dislodge, just to have, I've seen a lot of smaller projects have MIPA reviews and environments, the back reviews done on them. I just think it would be due diligence if it's possible, if you have it within your.
I just want to clarify one thing because I think you're aware of it. You know what the requirements are for a MIPA review? That would require, you know, there's a couple of different things, but a state permit, state funding, that is not, that is not here. That is not part of this project. And so MIPA is not, because it's not coming to play on this project. And so, because it's not triggered under state law, there is certain requirements that trigger a MIPA review, and those have not been met by this application. I'm not sure anybody disagrees with that, frankly. So, you know, that's, I can't speak to what has been told to the state, but it seems pretty straightforward. If you're not seeking a permit and you're not seeking funding. And again, I don't believe that a bylaw that was passed in May, a town meeting that has not been approved by the attorney general at this point in time would be applicable to this application. But again, I am happy to reach out to town council and find out.
How convenient.
Any other town officials that have, or board members that have questions? Sir, in the back, are you a town official or a board member?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hold on, just let me get a microphone over to you and please state your name and address before you speak.
Okay, Brett Colson, 21 Claus Anderson Road, Agricultural Commissioner. Basically, as I hear you keep referencing it, you keep bringing up the point that it's 20 feet high. You keep failing to mention that it's about 2,000 some odd feet wide. And I mean, also the question that Mr. Hudson posed about the remediation of the impervious surface. I mean, just so everybody knows what we're talking about here, we're talking, I believe you said 66 acres. I mean, Foxborough Stadium, to put it in perspective, the whole footprint is only 17.3. I mean, we're talking about a massive, massive project here. What are they going to do with that once it's all gone and Carvana goes kaput? Thank you.
Any town officials, commission members? Marissa?
Lisa Cook, Overgun 126 Loomis Street, co-chair of the Agricultural Commission. I have an assertion to make regarding one of the bylaws in section 185.9 regarding air and noise pollution and people offensiveness. So per Dennis Clark's comment, it seems to me that the applicant has failed to provide independent studies to demonstrate that this claim of neither dust, dirt, or noise pollution at any level will be acceptable or not. Are they aware that we are right to farm community and that this parcel is surrounded by active farmland? What sort of impact will that have on that farmland? Also, there have not been any. Apart from what we just saw in the center back's presentation, that's a top dancer review. We have not seen any design or artistic renderings of what this facility will look like. So we have no idea ultimately what it's going to be, whether it's going to be visually offensive or flagrant or in visual complementary character or scale to the properties immediately of its vicinity. Again, farmland surrounding it. So these elevation drawings right now depict a giant box with numerous overhead doors. To me, that is not compatible with the rural historic nature of the site or this right to farm community. So therefore, without an independent study of the name components that are going to be used at this facility and the present design of the facility not being available to the public, how can the board make a finding of fact in regard to pollution and visual compatibility to approve this special permit?
So to answer those two questions, the first, as far as visual, we do have, we do have elevations of building, they're right there. We have multiple sheets. It'll be tricky for you to see what direction you're looking at, but it's going to be a typical, I believe it's tilt-top construction, which is, you're down in the back, the acquisition is a very long building. It's 200,000 square feet. It's a big building, but it is a long, narrow building, as you can imagine, to run cars through process. That's a kind of a bird's eye. So that, you know, it's, again, there are certain areas that it could be minimally visible from, but the rest of the areas, as I showed and as you've seen in the Google Earth, it's going to be minimally visible. That said, we would be happy to screen it from the surrounding roadways. That's why we, you know, we didn't go out on the college highway. We actually purchased, or the process, they're in the process of purchasing an additional piece of land as part of one of those three because of that. So it made a lot of sense to kind of keep it back away from the road. So from a visual impact standpoint, it's not something that's going to be very tall as far as environmental regulation, how that all works. So there's obviously the local stuff. You've got to meet the board of health requirements. You've got to meet the fire department requirements for hazardous materials and those types of things. But there is a significant state. There's, there's got to be 10 different agencies within the state that were required to review and understand. We don't trigger any of the state permits. That's how minimally nauseous this is going to be. As far as air quality, there's no specific requirements that we're, we're over. We're, again, the question related to MIPA. We probably don't know in specifics how it works, but generally speaking, there are thresholds for certain size of projects. And there, if you have a state permit and or financial assistance, there's a possibility that you would trigger MIPA. In this particular case, this project is not. You have a very clean project from a conservation standpoint. The Conservation Commission has no jurisdiction over the project as proposed. We're completely out of those areas. We do understand it's a right to farm community, to give a community. We understand that there's farmland Mr. Wally owns. I don't know if that plant is eight yard yet. You know, there's, there's a lot of rural areas, and I understand that you do have the development impacts of the golf course and all these other things being developed. And you're feeling that, and that's understandable. But this, you know, there's a couple of things that I think are important to say. One, this project meets all of the requirements of the IR zone district. So planning board members up here may or may not like this project. They were appointed by you or elected by you so that they could make these tough decisions for you. They might not like it, but what they have to look at is, does it meet the requirements for what's required in that cell? And we have met all the requirements, and frankly, we have, despite the size of the project, a very clean project from an environmental standpoint. All this impervious surface that everyone's talking about is in an upland area. It's an area, mostly in areas that are already disturbed, you know, are actively cultivated.
But it's still our town.
So it's, so just, just to clarify, it's, you know, it's, it is a sizable project, but at the same time, from an environmental standpoint, it is not a large trigger for any of the regional projects that you would see. It's pretty benign from that.
Please, please, please. Town officials and board members, sir. If you're not a town official or board member, then we can, you will wait until the public comment section, please. Town officials or board members, please. Anybody else have comments or questions? Sir, respectfully, you know, we set this up with current town officials and board members, and you will have your opportunity during the, during the public comment. I appreciate your service, but it's just simply the, the rules of the road that we have set for it, please.
I have a question. It's Amber Bach from Economic Development. I live at Ten Pine Knoll.
Yep, go ahead, Amber.
Hi, so I'm just curious, you're saying that there's going to be 400 to 600 employees. All of our businesses in town right now have help wanted signs, so I'm a little curious how you're expecting to fill all those positions, one. Because we seem to need some help. I, I also, I, I'm concerned with the fact that you are stating that, you know, this area meets your needs and your criteria to put your facility in. But there's got to be a little bit more to it. So I am going to ask, is it because of our tax rate?
And I will say the same thing as I did before. I, you can, I'll turn it over to the applicant as far as responding to the question, questions that were asked by Amber. But, you know, I made, I think my position on that clear before.
So I probably defer a question to Jen, but I guess they're going to have to pay more to get more, to get the employees that they need, you know, provide a better job and pay more. So, you know, it's just, it's the same problem that everybody is, is dealing with right now after the pandemic. As far as the other questions that were mentioned regarding the tax rate, is there seems to be a question about the tax rate?
The first tax rate goes, again, I've mentioned before, that's not the driver of why we chose this particular.
It just, I, I'm just asking only because, like somebody else stated, that it, we are not close to any highways. It just seems like a lot of side roads to go through in order to get to anywhere major. So I, I just, I'm, I'm just curious as to why you chose Southwick besides just the lot itself.
And I, I, I want to give everybody an opportunity, but those questions have already been asked. They've already been, had answers provided. If you wish to add more as the applicant, you can. But again, to let everybody have an opportunity, I would like to try to stop being repetitive and ask new questions. We have a lot of, excuse me, we have a lot of people here and I assume have a lot of questions or comments, so I'd like to give people an opportunity. Is there anything else that you wish to add to that?
Yeah, so if you want, you guys can assume the tax rate is the reason. I, I don't know that, but you can assume that because it has no bearing on this particular proceeding. So let's all assume that it's the tax rate and then we can move on because the reality is this is the land use board. This is not the finance committee. This is not town meeting where you determine your tax rate. This is a land use board. So let's all assume it's the tax rate and move on.
All right. Any other town officials, either person or on Zoom who have a comment? And if you're on Zoom, it may just be easier if you speak up and let me know who you are. Okay. So.
Can you hear me as far as a question?
Are you a town official or board member?
No, I am not.
Okay.
Are you taking comments from Zoom yet? I'm sorry, I thought that's.
I will get there. And I'm, right? I will get there. So here's how I'm going to do this, you know, I'd like to point out that it's already 9:27. We're going to, to, I'm sure, continue this hearing to another date to allow for further questions to be. Okay, so you don't want us to continue it and have all your questions answered? We are going to, we're going to go to a certain point tonight, but like I said, and I've been doing this for a while, I'm pretty sure we are not going to finish it tonight. That is simply all I was saying. We are going to have, in all likelihood, a continued portion of this hearing, and people will be allowed to ask questions. So here's the best plan that I think I can come up with. I am going to start with the first row. And if someone, and actually, actually, hold on, let me back up one minute. Well, actually, no, let me say, when I get to this, I am going to ask, I'm going to start with the first row. I have been, as questions have been asked in the chat, I have tried to write some names down, and I will try to alternate between someone here and someone on Zoom so that everybody has an opportunity. There is, however, I know that there's been an attorney retained by, to be fair, I don't know necessarily who his client. I don't know necessarily who his client identity is, but I, I, I'll let him speak for that. I know attorney's been retained, retained, an attorney named Tim Ryan. I know he, it has a seminal for the board, and I will let him make some comments before we get into the full public comment, since he sort of represents a, a group of residents.
Just for the record, just for the record.
No, make sure it's green. Hold it.
Okay. Just for the record, Timothy Ryan. Timothy Ryan. Timothy Ryan, attorney at Eaton Flanagan in Springfield. It's a pleasure being here tonight. In my other work, I did 12 years as a member of the Springfield City Council, and we were the zoning and the special permit granting body for the city of Springfield. So I know a lot of what is here and what is considered and what is before you. I've been retained by Sage Southwick, which is an unincorporated group, and many of the members are several of the members here in this room. And I just want to say that I've known this community for 45, 50 years, and I usually enter coming up over 57, and you go by the Caligrees Farm, and you look out and you see that beautiful farm, you see that beautiful landscape. With all due respect, gentlemen, with all due respect to applicants, this wouldn't pass muster in the city of Springfield. And we're an urban, we're an urban city. This would not pass muster in Springfield. I don't know why and how the God's green earth, you think it should pass out here. You have a very, very beautiful community. You have a tri-state hiking trail. You have a two-state bike trail. You have three lakes, which are beautiful. You have a great golf course in the ranch, and you have all of these new homeowners. There's a fellow who used to live next to my cousin, another woman who lived next to my aunt all back at Springfield, who have come out here, who've been here for dozens of years because you've got a beautiful community. What strikes me, when we were in Springfield and we would do this, the applicant is the person. What strikes me, when we were in Springfield and we would do this, the applicant is the person who's applying for the permit. I, I don't understand how breakman construction, who's never going to sell a car, who's never going to store a car, is somehow the applicant.
Okay. I would just. I'd simply ask, as the attorney who's representing this group, that we try our best to move to the legal arguments and if. Please, I would ask that we try our best to move toward the legal arguments because, again, we have a lot. We have a lot of questions and a lot of people who want to ask questions here tonight. You are an attorney representing them, I'm presuming to offer legal reasons. So I, I just respectfully ask, I, I give you some leeway, but I would respectfully ask that we try to be efficient and move on to that portion of it.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I'm being efficient, but the foundation of any legal challenge is who's the proper applicant? And with all due respect, I'm not sure the town has ever figured that out because the applicant is Carvana. It's not the construction company. It can't be the construction company. I, I'm just pointing that out. I, I would, and I, and I do beg to read to you, I have a letter here dated yesterday, and I will hand it in. It's addressed to the planning board, and it's from John Wally. And it reads, "Please be advised that as an owner of a budding property, I am most certainly opposed to propose Carvana special permit for the above referenced site." And this is General Counsel. An active farmer in this community, the proposed 60-80 acre used car development is not in keeping with the character of our town and all that we have sought to build in this community. Includes noting, "Please note that I cannot attend the June 29, 2021 Planning Board hearing, but do not take my absence as a lack of interest or purpose, and I respectfully request that the Planning Board unanimously vote to deny the proposed special." And I have a letter here that I will also candid, but I just want to point out some of the highlights. And you have to start with your zoning code. And the purpose of your zoning code states, among other reasons, that the purpose is to lessen congestion on the street. That's number one. Number two, to conserve health. Number three, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water supply, drainage, sewage, open spaces, and then the public requirements. Four, conserve the nature of land in buildings, including the conservation of natural resources and the prevention of blight and pollution of the environment. With, with all due respect, you have here, in, in a world and a country where half of it's burning or, and dealing with almost biblical drought, you have a proposal to take over and destroy 135 acres of farmland, 135 acres of agricultural land. And so nothing is being done to conserve the nature of the land in the buildings. Where I come from, the city of Springfield, where you have more than three unregistered cars, that's a junkyard. And a junkyard is by definition blight. And so what you're going to do is put in here four to five to eight thousand unregistered motor vehicles. That is blight on steroids. Under a, it's important to recall, in contrast to what Mr. LeBeck said, this is a discretionary act. You are acting as government officials. It is discretionary. They are not, absolutely not entitled to the special permit. And they don't get it if the opposition doesn't allow you. You have, as government official, you're exercising your discretion, and they have to make their case, and you don't do it just because there's not enough of an opposition. And I submit that there's a hell of an opposition in this room. Your zoning code at section 185.9 sets forth 17 factors. In my letter, I address about 10 of them. But the proposed site is not suitably local. College Highway is your main street. The bike path is one of your great amenities, and you're going to put this between your main street. They're not doing it in any other self-respecting town. They don't put used car slots on, of this size, on a main street, particularly when they're not even selling it there. So there, there's no reason to put it there. It's not an appropriate site. The, the proposed use is not compatible with the character and the scale. So they showed earlier on that, the, the buildings across the street, which is Tractor Supply and the other building. Tractor Supply is 16,000 square feet. So it's 1/8, is my math correct? 1/12th the size of this. The Tractor Supply lot is maybe two, three acres. This is 137 with 65 page. It's not in the same character and nature of the other uses. And by the way, the other uses are to Mr. Wally and the farmland across the street. So clearly tearing down the bards, plowing all of this under and putting it, you know, you're going to have, what? Six, 10, eight inches of gravel, and then you have two to four inches of asphalt on top of it. It's not in keeping. The use will constitute a nuisance. You're going to have the traffic. You're going to have the traffic in an intersection that hasn't been repaired, and there's no number of votes as to what they're going to commit. In the city of Springfield, I did some work with EPW. Fixing intersections, fixing intersections on state highways is not cheap. It's very expensive, and they're wishy-washy all over the place as to what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. But there's no commitment to this town as to any proposal, as to any dollar, let alone underwriting all of it. The proposed use will constitute a substantial inconvenience and a hardship to the butters. You've got all of this truck traffic, you've got whatever it was, 2,000 extra vehicle trips between the employees, between the testing of the vehicles. This is a substantial inconvenience. And most of these vehicles are going to go out of here via 57, they're going to go over the bike path. The more times a vehicle of that size comes in by a pedestrian, the greater statistically, the greater likelihood that something tragic will happen. By virtue of the size of those trucks, there's so many blind spots. The drivers could be the best, they could be the hardest working, the most attentive, but where you mix children, bikes, and trucks with huge blind spots, you're begging for problems. The project will have a significant adverse impact to service the ground. Right now, the rain comes down and it percolates into the earth because it's farming. Once you blacktop it over and put a building on it, you're going to have an adverse impact because it's going to come down, it's going to wash across the parking lot, it's going to pick up whatever debris's in the parking lot, and then they're going to try, infiltrate, or send it to an infiltration pond that tries to mimic what Mother Nature already created. So it's clearly by definition, and it's an adverse impact. Have you ever gone on the Cape Cod Bike Trail? And you, and you ride on the bike trail, and you see where they have these kind of industrial type uses. You're riding at the Cape and it's a beautiful bike trail, but those uses really detract from the quality of the experience just riding out for half a mile alongside this industrial slump. This thing will be adjacent to the bike trail. It's going to detract from this, the amenities of the bike trail. And nobody's going to say, geez, I went to Southwick and I got to ride by the Carvana site. I, I submit that it's, that the proposed use is not in harmony with the purposes or intent of the zoning code. The public good, this is your public, ladies and gentlemen. They are telling you the public good will not be served by this development. You don't have to say, yes, they can go back to the drawing board, they can pit the Enfield Mall or some other place immediately adjacent to either I-90 or I-91. But this place, which is 10 miles over the southern bridge from I-91, it's on, on one lane roads, whichever way you leave town. Everything's a one lane road. The public good is not served. And finally, the proposal that they put, the safeguards that they put, there, there's no definition here. It does not adequately protect the town, the adjoining communities, the adjoining properties. And with all due respect, Mr. Wally's request that this whole thing be voted down is, is the best position that's worth it.
Okay. So let's move on to public comments. I'm going to start right to left in the first row. I'm going to take someone here, and then I'm going to go on to. The Zoom on, and then, you know, we will continue going in that way. Since you're sitting, we will give you that opportunity, but I'm going to start from right to left, if you would. Okay, thank you. Sir, at the end.
My name is Greg Diley. I'm on Tenth Sale Road, just a few hundred feet from Henry Road, and only a half a mile from the proposed entrance. And I've read through the entire 111-page traffic study that's posted on the town website, and I found it absolutely terrifying. Lot of traffic that is, is expressed as minimal. 2,664 cars, right in the study that says car trips per day represent a, you know, a lot of 20-foot per car represent a line of cars 10 miles long. It's a lot of cars all going on the highway. And the peak of it is 2:00 to 3:00 PM, a time that's already busy, where there's 893 cars at that time, which was double the traffic on College Highway. But what I'm afraid of is to talk about how the car, the truck traffic would not go down Tannery. What's to stop all those cars from going up Tannery? They'll be congested at the light. They will all go down Tannery by all the residences there. Make it extremely unsafe. That, it's a road that is narrow, windy, hilly, no shoulders. I ride my bike on it several times a week. It's going to make it dangerous. The planning board is supposed to see to the safety and health of the community. This will create a danger for everyone that's in that path of traffic. And to minimize the number of trucks, 110 trucks a day, and according to the study, that was 10 hours, period, from like seven to six at night, is one every five and a half minutes. That's not minimal. In the 512 test drives, there's no commitment that those won't be on site. Where will they be? Will they be on all of our back roads? Will they be, you know, pushing the speed limit and accelerating and, you know, going, turning in all of the residential roads, they go up and down Tannery, hillside, Coase Hill Road, Loomis. Then I'm going to want to go through the traffic lights, and then all of this extra traffic, all these trucks going through the middle of Westfield? Or, or out 57 to the east, feeding hills? I just can't imagine that that's not a severe danger to the health and safety of this community.
Thank you. What I would do is something like this. If the, if the applicant wishes to operate anything on the, on the traffic study that was cited, I'm, I'm happy to give you the opportunity. If not, I'll move on to the next.
I think at this point, we'll just answer specific questions. They're general.
Of course, that's fine. So let me, and again, you know, I, I'll say this. There's a lot of people, there's a lot of people who have questions. There is no real great, wonderful way to do this. So I'm going to, as I saw names and saw questions, I'm going to sort of go in the order that I saw them from Zoom. I'm going to call out your name if you still have a question or a comment, you can make it, and we will go from there. So the first person I saw on the chat was Cheryl A Chance. Cheryl, if you have a question or comment, feel free to unmute and, and offer that now.
Thank you. I, Cheryl A Chance from 17 Sheep pasture road. I guess I don't necessarily have a question, but I do have a comment. I'm, I haven't grown up in Southwick, but I have transplanted here. And I've been here for about the past 20 years. And I'm here because of the nature of the community, and, you know, I live over by the lakes, and I can ride my bike to the bike path. And as I ride on the bike path, I see the farmlands and the lakes and the residential community. And it's really concerning to me. I eat the food in this town. I'm concerned about the pollution that this is going to bring into the community, both the air pollution, the light pollution, and certainly the traffic. And I'm worried about our kids and what's going to happen on shift change, or when some of the late to work, and they're rushing down Teeterie Road, which is a windy road. And as they stated, there's going to continue to be trees along it, so there's no clear line of sight if a child's riding their bike, or if they're getting out of, kids are riding, you know, getting out of school and riding their bikes or walking home. So I'm extremely concerned about this project, and I do not want it in my community.
Thank you. So I'm going to continue on. So.
So Porter again on Fallow's Row. I just have a question. I know the property has been purchased, or is trying to be purchased for this, for this project, but my concern is, is what I hear that they're going to go through Sam West Row, or they're going to go onto Feeding Hills Row, or they're going to use Hudson Drive. Now, what, what type of property, I mean, how are they, is this going to be all torn up to make a road in order to make access to, you know, the main road, or what's the purpose of this?
So let me just offer from a town perspective, and then I'll give the applicant a chance. With respect to the connection of Sam West to Hudson Drive, that has been something that has been talked about in town for, you know, as far as my understanding is, a pretty long time. And again, I want to make clear to everybody, prior to this application, there was grant money given to them to begin the process of, of, you know, looking into this and design. So, you know, I can only speak from the, the town standpoint. You know, as I look at it, it seems pretty straightforward with the way Hudson Drive, with that link, with that land now being mediated and being available to connect. You're really, there's not a huge distance between the end of Hudson Drive and, and the end of, and Sam West. So to me, it seems reasonably straightforward as far as design, but I'm not a design professional. But it, like I said, that's, that's from the town's perspective as I understand it. I'll let the applicant speak if they wish as well.
There's, there's no plan to connect this, this project, that there's no plan to connect or go down Tannery Road to Sam West to Hudson Drive. They're the most logical. They're the most logical route for leaving the site. Because I think a lot of people in the audience have mentioned is to stay off of Tannery as much as possible and go out to College Highway, which is a major truck route in the Gulf of America.
Okay. The next person whose name I wrote down on Zoom is Laura Doyle. Laura, if you wish to have a question or comment, feel free to.
Sure, thank you. Laura Doyle, 8 Pearlbrook Road. I think I had a couple of questions. Most of them have been responded to, except for the last one, which was related to.
Laura, if you don't mind, I just, could you speak up a little bit? Because we're having, at least me, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you. So if you could speak up, I would appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. So the last question that I had that hadn't been addressed yet was related to, what can we do as a town to avoid these types of zoning and planning issues going forward? There's a lot of town farmland in town. And, you know, over the coming years, it's likely that these lands will come up for sale and to make sure that they're zoned appropriately to protect the nature and the environment of our town so that we can continue to have a safe and quiet community.
Thank you, Laura. You know, I can quickly respond to that. You know, it's not necessarily pertinent to this application as we sit here. But I can tell you, for what it's worth, I had reached out today in response to an email from Bert Hanson, who kindly sent along some comments. And asked him and the, asked the ag commission, you know, through him as the co-chair, the EDC, Economic Development Commission and the Conservation Commission. You know, they may wish to go through the inventory of land in town and they may see whether there is, you know, protection that can be put on land or zoning changes or statutory protection or any other, you know, means. If they, if they feel that that's the case, they can certainly bring that to the planning board and we certainly consider it going forward. I'd also, I also pointed out to them and would expect, and I think they're, you know, willing and want to do it, which is to get involved in the master plan process. We've finally gotten grants for, to begin the master plan process. Our master plan, and there was a handout today, as Marcus has kindly mentioned to me. So if you haven't gotten it, I got it, you can pick one up when you're leaving. The master plan is currently in effect in town. It's from 1967. There has been some sort of isolated planning that has gone on, but there hasn't been a fully vast master plan since that time. We are going to begin the process and it's probably a couple of year process. But, you know, there's going to be subcommittees and public involvement and we encourage people to get involved in that and help, you know, provide a master plan that we as the planning board can then use when we're making these considerations. That's something we simply do not have as we sit here today, that we have been, as long as I've been on the board, trying to get. So hopefully that will be something that we have available to us in the near future. Okay, I will go to whoever's next in the first row, who has a question or a comment.
I agree, Scott from 126 out Loomis. We've mentioned lighting very briefly. I think it's a pretty big concern. Mr. Mike touched on it briefly, but we do have lighting bylaws as far as I've seen. And the plan hasn't included anything that's covered, the impacts that it's going to have for lighting. So I'd just like to recommend that the board and our request, the applicant, underwrite some sort of independent study with the cost to provide that, to study the lighting effects of this master project. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, good question. How does lighting become a concern in a project of this size? So we are required as part of the submission for our application to provide a photometric plan and does just that, so we have lighting. And does the photometric plan shows the foot candles, shows the spread based on the height of the light, based on fixtures, and then based on the surrounding, the combination of the light, let's say. So that said, it doesn't take any consideration existing vegetation in the site that will remain. But it does certainly show that all the light will shine down. It'll be dark sky compliant. And those are pretty standard requirements across the board with this type of project. Thank you.
One thing I would point out, you know, of the board members, if you guys have follow-up questions, just yell, get my attention. I'm happy to turn it over to you. Yeah, please. The next person I have on Zoom is Sophia Bobic, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Sophia, are you still on Zoom? Okay, let me go to the next person that I have on Zoom. I'll come back to Sophia, she's still there, just give me y'all later on. I have Melissa Long, who at least saw a question or comment in the chat. So if you have something you wanted to say now, please feel free to.
I'm actually using a different person's laptop because my battery crapped out. But you referenced the master plan a few moments ago. The audio's bad here, so I'm not sure if I followed that. Is that what you're suggesting people in town should read in order to get a better understanding of how planning board or select board or any type of permits are evaluated?
I wouldn't necessarily suggest reading the 1967 master plan for this particular application. I don't think that's going to be all that helpful. I think once we have a master plan, that is something, you know, again, hopefully people have a lot of input into it. And it provides a guide for the planning board when we're making decisions. That is the ultimate goal. But like I said, right now, we really don't have something, a master plan in town that we can turn to and look at, which we are allowed to do under the bylaws, to help guide our decision.
So, and I don't want to be a time hog, but just to clarify, there is no master plan for the town at the moment? And you said something about bylaws. Could you just speak a little more to that so I fully understand what, as a resident, I should read to understand better?
Sure. So the Commonwealth Massachusetts General Law has required towns and communities in Massachusetts to have a master plan. It is basically a 10- or 20-year plan as to where you see the town going and provides a bunch of different information to help with the planning process. That was last done in town in 1967. Obviously, that's, you know, no longer a usable plan since it's a 10- to 20-year vision. We are undertaking that process now. It's an in-depth process, two-year process to create a new master plan. Once that is done, the zoning bylaws in town, which is chapter 185 of the zoning of the town of Southwick bylaws, you know, do reference the master plan and allow the planning board to, you know, refer to and utilize the master plan and the goals set forth therein. But that's not something that we have at our disposal.
So in, I mean, I'll keep talking. I'm just curious, when there is no current master plan, who actually, I mean, how are these decisions made? Is there somewhere else that we can look to for this? Or is this it, like the meeting we're having right now?
So let me, and I'm going to then move on to someone who's in person here for the next, so that everybody can get a chance. But let me respond to that. This is submitted under chapter 185. It is something that is online. People can go and search it out and look at it online. There's a number of different applicable chapters. I'm not going to try to recite them right now because I will probably mess them up. So, but the special permit one is 185-9. That is the primary one and it contains a bunch of factors that we have to look at in making a decision. You heard Attorney Ryan before citing a bunch of the factors that are contained therein. There's a number of other permits that they're requesting and those have different sections that apply to them. And I would encourage everybody, because this is what we have to use to make this decision. I would encourage people to go look at the language that's being used in those bylaws because ultimately that is what we need to apply to this application.
Thank you.
Thank you. First row. Anybody have questions or comments if we keep going down? There you go.
Hi, Carvana team.
I think you took important. I'm sorry. Gary Nguyen, I own New Year's Affordable Hearing Care in Southwick and in the Crystal Plaza. And I can tell you from my experience, over four years of owning a business here, that I love this town, but I don't want to see any changes of this nature whatsoever because it's not for the good of the town. Respect to the people here representing Carvana. They don't live in this town. They don't know this town. This town cannot take any more traffic than comes through on 10202 at 57 than we brought right now. If anyone tries to leave or end leaves, Crystal Plaza, certain times of day, you're not getting out for a while, especially on 10 and 202. But this is not the right place. It's not the right place for this. You know, there's got to be a place down near Bradley International that would be close to 91 or something. Lots of open space down there. But this is not the right place.
The next person I have on my list going through the chat was Ruth Harper.
I didn't have a question.
That's fine. And again, if Sophia, I think it's Bobic, wishes to jump in here, feel free to. I don't want to skip over you if you're still on there.
Can you please use the hand raising icon? I think that's probably more effective.
I think I specifically said how I was going to do it and there frankly is no great way to do it. I see your hand raised. I see a bunch of other, other hands raised, but there's really no great way to do it. I picked the way, I think it's reasonably fair and, and, you know, I'm going to continue this process. I saw a question from Tiffany Jacqueer. I could be saying that wrong and I apologize.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. I was just curious as to if there's been any other studies done of Caravanas that are of similar nature, that they show the employment rates as proposed?
Yeah, I will turn it to the applicant if they wish to respond to that.
So because we're struggling as a town to employ the businesses that are already here, I'm curious as to your success rate of employing at the numbers that you have supplied over the next current years, if there's been another similar sized Carvana that you have employed those kind of numbers at, at that rate?
Sure. That's where Alabama, I think, would be a good example, also in a rural community of employment.
And to understand you.
The ramp up is taking a little longer for that particular facility. That's why we might estimate 25% when we first opened up and then a continual ramp up. And that could take, you know, as long as five years to get to that point where we're at full capacity or employment, I should say. So we're expecting to put in some time to get to those numbers. We don't expect to be able to hire.
So what happens to the facility at five years when it's not at, you can't employ enough people to work there? What happens then?
Sorry, it was a technical issue, trying to hear you.
No worries. Can you hear me now?
Just give us one minute, I'll let you know.
So if you can hear me now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So if, what happens in five years if you can't fully employ that full facility? What happens? Are they obligated to stay? Are they going to leave? What are we going to do with this facility if it does not employ as many people as they are proposing or that they need?
Essentially, if we can't employ the member that we're looking for or still, we're still going to continue to operate. We would just not be able to produce the amount of cars that we originally estimated for this particular facility.
Okay. Next, author of the properals. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Ricky. I'm from 128.
Give us your last name and all this. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So it feels like forever ago, but at the beginning of the meeting, it's kind of hard to hear. But I believe there was a board member, Mr. Phelps, that said that disclosure forms were filed with the state recently. And I want to know were any of these disclosures in relation to Carvana? And where I'm getting at with that is, is there anyone on this board that has a conflict of interest in regards to Carvana? Or they have a disclosed or have a perception of a conflict of interest with the support board or state?
So there are forms that have to be filed as far as conflict of interest. But it is on each board member and it's come up and we've dealt with it before where people have a conflict of interest. They deal with it in the way they, they need to deal with it. There's an ethics commission in Massachusetts that you can call and get advice. For example, we haven't opened it, but I have, I have a disclosure that I just filed that I will make public when we open up the 42D poster. I had to make a disclosure when we were dealing with the cell tower because I lived in that neighborhood. But, you know, it is up to the board members who have the information to assess whether they have a potential conflict of interest and deal with it according to the laws.
Great. I was wondering, do you have one, sir, with Carvana?
I do not. But given the fact that this is open and no one has made a disclosure, I would suggest to you that that means that no one has a conflict of interest.
Beautiful. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. So going on through the chat, I saw someone named Sarah and I apologize because I think that was the only name that was in the chat who may have a question. Okay. The next one in the chat that I saw was, well, Juliet Hanson, though. That does not look like Juliet Hanson. I believe that's Bert Hanson. So Bert, if you could unmute. Hold on, Bert. I think we both hit it at the same time. So if you could just unmute yourself again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry, I don't actually have a comment or question at this time. Sorry if there was a hand up there.
That's fine. I just wanted to, you know, I've been sort of monitoring the chat as it's going along. I wanted to give respect to the people who are putting questions in the chat who are not able to be here. So I'm trying to give people the opportunity as they ask the questions to ask them in person and have a response if they wish to do so.
Yeah, thanks for that, but nothing right now.
Thank you. Somebody, Lynn Coils, I had down as next on Zoom.
Can you repeat that name again?
I wrote down. I wrote down. I was doing quickly, but I wrote down the last name is C O W L E S. Coles. Thank you. Okay, next, Kimberly Hannah, I believe. Again, I'm having trouble reading my handwriting. I'll do it quickly. Okay, so let's, I'm just going to start on my screen. This is the only way I know how to do it, which is person on the left says, Good Fight 97. I will ask you to unmute and if you have a question or comment, you can make it. Just please give your name and address first.
Okay, my name is Alice Boyd. I'm a former member of the school committee and I live at 57 Tannery Road.
Alice, if you could just speak up a little bit more, it was a little difficult to hear you, but the best, if you could do it, that'd be great.
Um, where, I don't know where the microphone is on my computer, but.
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Alice Boyd. I live at 57 Tannery Road and I'm a former member of the school committee for two terms. My question, I'm also a member of the group that hired the lawyer. Regarding this parcel within the 300 foot footage is supposed to be reserved for future development. What planned future development? And that's language from your document, future development. What future development is planned?
Did you hear that last part, Rob? I didn't quite hear it.
Ma'am, if you can hear me, did you ask about the 300 foot strip along College Highway? And what potential future development that might hold?
That's correct.
So there, there are no specific projects related to this project. However, you know, as a land use consultant who's been working in Southwood for the last 20 years, I have seen a lot of development. You just saw some small box, medium box retailers, probably see something like drive through or something like that. And I think there's probably three to four patent sites there realistically. So in the future, you could likely see something like that. In the industrial restricted zone, there are a number of different uses that are allowed. And to the question of the other lady that was on Zoom, there was a question about how you can figure out what can go where and what people can and can't do. There's two really good resources. One is the Town Zoning Map, which tells everybody how each parcel is zoned, color coded. And you can figure out what zone a specific property is in. And then if you take that zone, you look up the regulations, zoning regulations, chapter 185. That will allow you to see what uses are allowed by right, which means you don't need a special permit and then by special permit. So hopefully that will help, but, but there are a number of uses that are allowed in industrial restricted zone. And if you go on the zoning map and then check cross reference to the zoning regulations, it should be quite helpful for you to get a feel for what could go there. Thank you.
Okay, another follow up question to that. Is there any plans for you to put one of your famous towers on that property on College Highway?
Is that what you said? Or they sell power?
Well, yeah, a Carvana car selling tower on College Highway.
There is no, there's no plan for retail sales at this location and those are typically going to be in our metropolitan area.
Um, I did read in one of your documents that 2028 seemed to be a target zone for when Carvana would develop that property. It was kind of an off comment. Maybe it wasn't supposed to be said.
Something about 2028 is what that's being developed, but is that what you said, ma'am?
Being developed by Carvana in 2028.
The facility that we're talking about here, ma'am?
Yes, the open property on College Highway.
Okay, yeah, so just.
2028 will be developed by Carvana. And I wondered what that Carvana development would be.
So. Okay, ma'am, I think you're referring to the traffic study that has a projection year for build out in the, in the, you know, they, they look forward. Traffic, traffic studies look forward very specific information based on 19 annual timing. There's a lot of factors that go into it. So the, the project, if it, if it is approved, will be, you know, pursued as soon as possible.
And I just want to say one thing and I'll move on to where was next on the front row here, but you know, we can certainly get more information from the applicant and I think the questions are, are valid and reasonable. You know, and maybe they at some point can have further explanation. Traffic studies, you know, are tough to read and understand sometimes and understand what the parameters are and what they're using in the study. And sometimes, you know, it's just difficult for someone who's not familiar with them. And I've read a few of them and I'm still have difficulty with them to fully understand what they're meant to be, the data that they're using and, and sort of understand how that relates to the actual project. So, you know, you know, I, I think there is some confusion there from a lot of folks. At some point, you know, I want to get to some other questions, but that may be something that, you know, some further information is provided on.
Uh, just, just one more thing.
No, no, ma'am, ma'am, we have to go on to, this is, no, ma'am, no, we're going to have to go on to someone else at this point in time. I apologize. Who's next in the front row here? There you go. Oh, we had someone else. Thank you.
Hi, Pat Talbot again from Buffalo Street. My question is directed to the gentleman on the end. When you were speaking earlier, I couldn't hear you very well, but you were mentioning 120 units above the depot street, uh, the housing thing?
Is this going to be for Carvana?
Yes, it is.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
A housing development, does that have anything to do Carvana or is that a separate thing altogether? Because somebody has said that maybe you're going to build housing for migrant workers coming in or something?
So just to clarify, when I got earlier, I was, I was continuing a meeting that's a separate project.
Okay, so that doesn't have anything to do with Carvana?
Correct.
Okay, and I have another question for the board chairman up here. You mentioned that you were presented this by the builders in January. When's the first time that anybody on the board, including yourself, ever heard the word Carvana, that you knew Carvana at all?
I heard it in January.
Okay, then why didn't it come out then?
Because we didn't have an app. So now, the planning board considers applications that is before it. And I, you know, I will adjust this now and I've said it before, but we deal with applications that are before us. The town planner and myself as the chair have discussions with all kinds of potential applicants throughout the year. You heard in the town planners report, if you were here at the beginning, that the town planner will list the discussions that they had throughout the week or two weeks or whatever period of time between meetings. This is something that happens regularly for applicants of all different sizes. The planning board is often the first stop for people in town to sort of get a sense of the bylaws and who you should be talking to to understand what, you know, the project needs may be and how those can be met in town. So it is not in any way unusual, but the planning is, from my point as a, as the planning board chair, the planning board is concerned with applications that are before. And until there's, excuse me, let me finish. Until there's applications in front of us, you know, we're dealing with hypotheticals and that's not something that we really spend much time with because it, you know, it's not something that, that we're tasked to do. So I would respectfully say that this project was mentioned as what it was going to be as a, as a, I forget the words that were used, but a car processing center or whatever, whatever it was used as a potential application on the horizon that was reported in the town planners report repeatedly because there was contacts. When the application came in, it was referred to as, you know, the, the application of bricklayer inspectors. I believe that was referred to in the minutes. But, but, you know, that's, it's, it's not typical for, for the contacts between potential applicants and board and, and plan, and town officials like planners.
The advocate wasn't the actual person that presented this bill on the business. So that's, you know, kind of funny.
Again, I, you know, and I'm sure, and more than, we are certainly as a board going to sit down and look at what attorney Ryan has submitted. I believe he addressed that and it said it was in his letter and I'm happy to look at the legality of it. And we can talk to our town council about that. But as far as I understand, you know, the, the applicant, I mean, I guess in my mind, it may be I'm wrong, but in my mind, I treat it like, you know, if you're going to go pull an electrical permit, you know, it's not you, you're not putting your name on that necessarily. They're putting, you know, the, the electrician is going pulling the permit for the property and that's being filed. So, you know, that's sort of at least in my mind, how I sort of see it. But my understanding is this is pretty typical on a design built project like this to, to have this set up.
Okay, good enough. Can I make one suggestion? When this is continued, can we go to the high school? Because I think this building is over, I mean, this building is over capacity, but when they get in, it does, or are we able to probably come in?
So, and that's a, it's a fair request. Let me just say this. The reason we are, I will look into the next meeting. The reason we are in here now is because we are right at that point where we're able to do live meetings. And so we had hearings that were advertised to be in the town hall. So we had a constriction to be in the town hall. We really couldn't advertise, have public notices that said, come to the town hall for this hearing and then put it over at the high school. You know, that's not a proper notice. So at, at least with this hearing date, we were constrained to the town hall. I don't know in the process if we are constrained at the next one as well. At some point, I think that constraint goes away, you know, as long as we plan appropriately. So, you know, I think that's a fair suggestion, but just so you know, the reason why we're here tonight is because of those constraints. All right. So we're going down to Margaret Westwell on Zoom. And actually, Margaret, hold on one second before you, and I think you're still on mute. I'm, I'm, I want to get the board's input on timeframe for this. Everybody okay with that?
No, no.
Margaret Westwell, do you have a question or comment?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Uh, okay. First of all, I live right on Feeding Hills Road down by the lights down near North Long Yard Road. And the traffic all through, until two o'clock in the morning, I'm hearing trucks out there. The traffic is so bad through, through here, I can't even get out of my driveway during the day. I am also a school bus driver for Southwick. What this is going to cause as far as traffic for these buses is, it's going to be a very dangerous situation. A very dangerous situation. It's already very bad over there as it is and it's just going to make things a lot worse.
Thank you. All right. You are.
It's behind you.
Right behind you with the mic. You don't have to go anywhere with, with your knee. You can sit down in a chair if you wish.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, Charlie Almonds, I'd like to commend you.
Be good with your address, please, as well, sir.
125 Anne's.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to commend you for your running a, this is a very difficult meeting, bro. And I've run many, many meetings, hundreds, and you've done a great job and it's very stressful. And, and I also would like to commend you for opening up the clandestine secrecy of the Carvana. And let's make it clear, this is Carvana, not Nirvana. So, Mr. Chairman, very quickly, on my background, I'm a teacher for 14 years, a businessman for 37 years, a US Marine from 66 to 68. So I have a pretty extensive background. And in your master plan, one thing we didn't discuss is the impact of the youth and the safety of the youth. When you have all of these vehicles, you have the constraints in the community. And then you have to look at the safety factors of how it's going to impact the youth, both your children and your grandchildren. The peace, tranquility of this community are going to be changed forever. It's never going to be the same if Nirvana places roots here. The lack of transparency that I've seen at this, at this meeting, in this town is quite shocking. Not to reveal who these people are. If you know this statement about that Carvana is a multi-billion dollar corporation, they don't give a damn about us. Also, I'd like to ask the Carvana individuals, and this is a tough job for you two, and I respect all of you for giving up. And probably fairly well compensated. But you, did you contact the mayors of Springfield, Agawam, Westfield, the town managers of Hamden and Brandy? That's a question. About the impact, do you know it took years to build 57 and still not complete? The intersection of Feeding Hills going into Agawam has been a nightmare for 40 years. And finally, they did some good changes where you actually have two lanes. When you have hundreds and hundreds of vehicles traversing these intersections, it's going to have a major impact, not just on Southwick, but every single community in Western Massachusetts. And to come and find this town, we've got our neighbors and friends in all of these adjoining communities because they're all going to be impacted. And once this facility is in place, it's going to be hard to do away with it. Now, earlier in the meeting, a distinction was made on the property that it's zoned industrially, you can put certain things there. It's one thing to put Carvana there as opposed to other, you know, businesses. That's a different ballgame entirely. Also, during the demonstration, not demonstration, the, the march that was taking place a couple of days ago, I want to point out that a few of your Carvana, because I was there, flipped the bird at the marches. You flipped the bird in this community.
I'm going to ask that you finish up here and we can move on to the other people. You'll have a chance, you'll have a chance once everybody has had a, a comment to continue on.
Mr. Chairman, you allowed everyone else to speak and you spoke more than half the meeting, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect. I didn't come here representing Agawam. I didn't come here. I'm going to be the next mayor of Agawam and I don't want to see this happen to our town. Awali is a great guy.
Again, let's please. Let's please, sir.
But you let everyone else speak. You let the Zoom people speak. They weren't even here.
So do you want us, do you want to stay in here?
Yes.
Okay. Gina Patterson, do you have a, a question or a comment?
I do, actually. You know, given the recent events in Miami, I think it's critical that the town does their due diligence to protect their charges and that's the residents. I do have a couple of points as it relates to this Pandora's box. Doug recently stated in an interview that the acreage that was zoned industrial since 1970, I find that statement to be disingenuous as it, as it, as it, as a reasonable interpretation would have understood the 1970 zoning of Southwick to mean industrial farming and ag, given the usage of the time. It appears that the, the, the board and the planning has really, really kind of have, you, you guys haven't been forthcoming about this to the residents in terms of transparency or the timeliness. I find it interesting that this is being rolled out during the height of summer when most of the residents are vacationing and are out of town. If this is allowed to go through, we can be assured that the town is going to bring public transportation and bus routes, public housing to support this facility if they haven't already done it with the housing that they're developing now. I think, I think what's more likely. I think, I think what's more likely is, you know, obviously this, there's going to be certain higher crime rates that are seen. Uh, we've seen it in other towns that have gone this route, that have gone for the quick buck instead of, you know, auditing the long-term effects of the downstream effects. We market ourselves as a recreation community. You know, I, I just, I don't for the life of me understand how this even passes mustard for planning. You know, I mean, now we're going to assume that our law enforcement, who's already spread thin enough as it is, is now going to be focused on Main Street in this business in lieu of our, our neighborhoods. I, I'm just, I'm just shocked that this even has gotten this far. Finally, I think there's been a lot of talk around town that this is a done deal. Why do you think that is? Why have we not been informed of this massive change to our town landscape? The town, you know, they often use the automated phone system for mandatory messaging. So this could easily have been relayed to the town if it was deemed important. There was so much veil of secrecy behind this that I'm almost certain that you guys anticipated backlash. Again, given all the talk that this is a done deal, I hope the town does the right thing in votes no. And, and then really gets to work to doing some real planning, looking at multiple smaller economic development opportunities, opportunities that build on our reputation as a recreational community and green space and start it instead of just trying to hit the jackpot, you know, with a single big payout. It should be the select boards and planning boards mandate to ensure that we, we know what the future of this town is today and going forward. Thank you.
So, a couple of things. It is frustrating to me as someone who has given a considerable amount of time to the select board, I mean, to the planning board, um, as well as these members sitting next to me, as well as the members on the select board, who have given up their time to hear people, um, repeat rumors and conspiracy theories about things being a done deal and whatever. It really bothers me when it comes from members of, among our members of this board, as it just did, uh, who know better than that. Uh, this board considers the applications that are in front of us, this is not a done deal. Uh, we are here to gather information and make a decision. That is why you are all here. Um, so I, I can't control what people think or what their opinions are. All I can do is sit here and tell you what the process is and what we do. And I can tell you that I damn sure take it seriously, and I know that the people here do. And so I don't think it is too much to ask for a little bit of respect for us in the process.
With all due concern, Jim, people talk. This is a small town.
I don't think it is too much to ask to give us some respect, and Gia, you will have an opportunity to speak.
That goes both ways, Jim.
I don't think it is too much to ask to give us the opportunity to act as the board members that we have volunteered to do. I would ask, since Ms. Patterson has an issue with when this was zoned, when she understands this to be, have put in, to have been put in the industrial restricted zone. And, you know, she could certainly comment on what steps she took when she was a board member to take it out of it. Well, I know, I'm not, I, you know, tell me, I don't know if she's telling me that this is not, this was some different category in 1970s. Then, then tell me when it was put in.
Doug stated for the record, excuse me, I'd like to, I would, I'd like to actually respond to that. Doug?
So, let me be clear. I just, I, I, my understanding is that industrial restricted zone at a minimum has existed in this town for 20 years, maybe more. Um, I think this property has been in there for after a time. Um, and again, whether you think it should be or not, it is. And that is what this board needs to consider with this application.
A reasonable interpretation of that.
There are reasons why, uh, never mind. Okay. Who's in the second row who wants to speak? Can we sell that first? I'm sorry, then I didn't see your hand before when I went over to here, so I apologize.
Thank you. I have, uh, comments on a specific bylaw.
If you could just put your name and address on the record, I would appreciate it.
Diane Hale, 5.1 Grove. And I will leave a copy of this because it has a lot of bylaws listed. Section 185-282, security and safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers. And, uh, specifically, section 18536 in its entirety relative to environmental performance standards. The planning board's purpose for section 185282 is to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers. If fire, gas, explosion, major water leak, sewer jacks, or any other major incident posed, Carvana site would be devastating on this site and have a direct adverse impact on all of the surrounding areas and potentially in the entire town. The applicant is not provided an emergency response plan in the event of a major incident. From the planning board documents, it appears the board has offered no emergency response requirement from the applicant to date. While the town of Southwick has an outstanding emergency response corps, it is not able to handle an emergency event of the scale possible for a site this large. 78,000 fast-plating materials on the site that the applicant's projected to normal operating loads. And $12,000 gallon, $12,000 gallon above ground gas needs charged. There is no way to tell from the application what unplanable or hazardous materials may also be on the site. The applicant must admit that the emergency response plans the board will review and approve by all departments that will be involved in the response. And will have to include response teams from surrounding towns. An event of the possible scale of this site requires teams from many surroundings. Without an emergency response plan reviewed and approved by the responsible parties and towns, the board cannot ensure the health and safety of the community and cannot approve a special permit for these bylaws cited. And I have a copy for you with all those bylaws I referenced.
Yeah, so just to, just to clarify, you know, we would be happy to communicate with the fire department further beyond what we've already provided during the application. But generally speaking, Carvana has a loss prevention team. The building itself is non-int combustible. It's kind of pretty. Um, and the loop around the building, fire loop around the building, by 10 to 15 fire hydrants. Uh, we are well within the purview of regulations, and there's no specific outstanding requirement that we have not met. But if there are questions or concerns from the fire department, we can certainly address those and make sure that whatever's requested is provided to their, to their satisfaction. Thank you.
Hold on one minute if you, um. Okay, um. Yeah, I'll certainly take a look at these. I, I, I apologize because I'm not, I'm kind of stuck trying to find 282 because I'm not seeing it while I'm here. But I, so I, you can certainly address those. I will take a look at this letter, um, and, you know, we'll go through it, um, um, and, and let you know. So, yep. Okay, um. The next person I see on Zoom is David and Jennifer, and it's cut off. I don't know if it's reality or not.
Yes, reality.
Go ahead.
All right, David Reel, 84 South Long Yard Road. Um, I do have some concerns about the traffic. I, I don't believe there's any ill intent on behalf of the planning board or any undue secrecy, but that being said, I have concerns about the planning, uh, or the traffic that could be caused by this. Reading the traffic study, it seems like there's only a few hours of analysis done, um, spread throughout two dates. My concern is with the number of trucks coming in, what is that, uh, delta from our baseline number of heavy tractor trailers going through town, given our single lane roads and tight intersections? Do we have that number, um, as part of that traffic study? And secondly, do we have the right infrastructure to accommodate these truckers, places for them to, to spend the night if need be, get food, use facilities, et cetera? Or how is that going to be handled? Thank you.
Thank you, David.
So the delta between the two, the, the trips, right? So we talked about those. As far as the, um, counting existing truck traffic, I don't believe that's been, you know, split up. Any questions?
Sorry, is a quick, is that possible to do as part of an enhanced traffic study? Because I, I just want to know, that, that is the biggest concern to me about the character of the town is the increased heavy traffic, more so even though than the cars. And I, I just don't know how to evaluate the delta if we don't know what the baseline is.
Do that. We could look into that, um, and then, you know, obviously that would be variable, you know, on a given day, and, uh, so, yeah, sure, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are we still in the first row or are we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think there was unfortunately the question that wasn't answered, but I'd like to answer.
Sure.
In regards to truck traffic overnight drivers. Carvana owns their own logistics team. Uh, we own our, our drivers work for us. Um, so essentially, it's part of the perk for driving for Carvana, it's two of four hours. Our drivers drive out four hours, drive back in four hours. So if there is a long leg trip that cannot be completed within that four hour window, um, there are hub areas where essentially it's like a relay, they will need another truck driver, they'll exchange keys, and then, um, continue on to make those deliveries. So that's one of the perks that we offer our employees is being able to come over there.
Thank you. Um, the first row is rehab. Go ahead.
Roger Cattell, former select.
You could say your address, please, sir. If you could, if you could say your address, please, sir.
Four Fields.
Thank you.
As a used car dealership.
So my understanding is that they will be obtaining a license for a used car dealership. I forget if it's a, like, a cab or a doer, whatever.
Well, because I'm going to tell you, in the past, we, as a board member, the select board, we denied any new applications for a used car. So if they're going to issue one, they're going to have to make it up.
They're not going to, they're not selling onsite. There is no public sales onsite.
So the, the, uh, the state will issue class two licenses, but there will not be local sales. It's just to the state. So, um, there's no car lot, there's no car sales happening. It's just a processing facility. The car sales happen. The car sales happen onsite, online. So there's no sales on this. This is literally a processing facility.
All right. So let's go to the next person on Zoom. Jessica Pelly, do you have a question or comment?
Yep, Jess Pelly, 15 John Mason Road. Um, I was scrolling through the chats and I came across a comment, um, that says, Crestview has already signed a contract and they're to begin work next month. Can anyone verify if there's any truth to that? And if so, um, could someone explain how we're accepting bids on a project that's not even been approved yet?
I heard the same thing.
I believe a number of contractors, site contractors and probably other contractors have submitted bids. Breaking Constructors is in charge of that. They're also the applicant. Um, they're the project manager for Carvana. Carvana is in the car sales business. Breaking Constructors is in the building business. So, um, what, what you have is a number of contractors that probably have been given the nod that their number is good and that they're potentially going to get the job. If, if the project is not moving forward, obviously that goes away. But I do believe they have selected a preferred site contractor. And I do believe that there's a number of other contractors that are preferred locally, who create quite a bit of construction jobs. And, um, you know, generally speaking, I think that may be true. And, um, you know, but, but again, if it doesn't get approved, it doesn't. Thank you.
Well, sir, I, I was about to go to the gentleman with the hat on over there, so.
Bill Fraser, 100 Congo Monroe. A lot of our appointed and voted town wards are here to act on our behalf legally, statewide, and by law. They're also on, act on our best interest and what, the reason why we vote them. So with that being said, are you guys going to vote the planning board? Are you going to make a vote tonight on these applications? I think I guess we're going to.
Um, it is 10:49, um, and I think there's a few more comments or questions that we're not going to get to. So it is going to be continued, is my expectation, in the next 11 minutes.
Okay.
Um, and, and we'll move on to the next hearing, and when the process is completed, we will move to a vote.
Okay. With that being said, the representatives of Carvana or whatever company you guys call yourself to get this ball rolling. You guys have seen the opposition of these people in this room. We only represent about three or four thousand more people in this town. It couldn't be, you saw the opposition of other board members. I don't have any indication of what the feelings are from emergency services. I acted in that capacity for 27 years here. I have my opinions as to what we can handle in this town. So I ask you guys to withdraw your applications.
Thank you. Um, I will, um, what I will say is, uh, fire and, and public safety, I have reviewed the original plans, uh, the updated plans. I'm not sure if I've got a comment back from them on it. Um, those will be made available. We'll try to put them online with the, with the rest of the materials that are there so you can take a look at it. Um, there was very limited, uh, questions, I think, from fire and police initially. Um, and, you know, you can certainly take a look at what the comments are on the updated plans. All right, um. Online, we got Karen Woods. It's all right. Karen? Woods?
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, I just would really like to convey just, just some comments. I don't know whether this can be changed or not, but I think we need to learn from this. Um, and I think you should also take a look at that. There are still 155 people on the Zoom, and there is a room full of people. So this is a topic that you can say that you didn't know that it would be so impacting to our citizens. But if you didn't, you should have, as a board and as not just your board, but the selectmen also. The agricultural com, um, committee, I have to really thank for all their diligence. The agricultural com- um, committee, I have to really thank for all their diligence on helping us with, with guiding us with this. If this isn't their approval process even, however, that is what we are, an agricultural town. And these citizens wanted, uh, live here because of that. I really feel like we were misled and it was in in its disguise, like it has been set before. Um, just last week, I was caught behind a tractor and in a lot of traffic. And you know, I'm not the only one. This is going to be the he- the whole summer. It's going to be full of tractors, farming tractors, tobacco tractors. We've got now the bike trail. They've cr- uh, closed off the parking lot on Feeding Hills Road. So now people are biking from Powder Mill School lot on the road, children as well as their parents. And we're going to have all of these large vehicles passing all of these, um, obstacles. We have a high rate of accidents and fatalities on Route two oh two. I know we've done traffic studies and you've turned in that, um, re- um, reports. But how did anybody look at the traffic on on the, um, accident percentage, uh, that we have in our town for such a small town? I would like to hear that. Nowadays, you have to plan your errands just to be able to go shopping. You have to take right turns out of everywhere because you can't take a left because it's so much traffic. The whole footprint of our town, I feel, is going to change just by this one business coming in. When the zoning laws were made and the bylaws were written in the seventies or whenever they were updated last, this Carvana idea wasn't in anybody's mind. No big thing like this was planned that could come in here. If the bylaws are not updated, well, then that's what the boards, I feel, should have been looking at to do and keep updated with the times. I really feel strongly about this, as do a lot of people. I feel like we are just a little town and they thought that we could come in and we wouldn't put up any, any fuss. But if we are a town, a small town, but that's what we like and we are strong and I'd like to keep it like that. And I appreciate that you taking all these comments because I do think that people care. Thank you.
Okay. And again, I think all of you have been waiting all night. We ha- I I don't know what to tell you other than I have to set some sort of process to go through this because a lot of people, respectfully, a lot of people have questions. There has to be some process. So everybody's been here all night. Ma'am, go ahead.
Your name, everyone, hear me? Hi, Diane Gardner, two middle lane. Um, I'm here today to represent the many who cannot attend the meeting tonight, those home caring for others, children and family, those away from town tonight, working to support those families. The many who have voiced concerns about the proposed decision to bring Carvana into our hometown. I'm one of the many residents of Southwick, your neighbor, your constituent, your customer, who strongly opposes approving the special permit for Carvana to build a facility on a property on Tenerife Road. The proposed Carvana facility is not suitably located and is not reasonably compatible with the character and the scale of other uses in the state vicinity. The plan has an adverse impact on adjoining area, neighborhood in the town at large, including increased traffic on our country. One lane road, negative impact to commute times through Southwick, negative impact to school bus schedules, increased noise pollution, increased air pollution, net impact on carbon footprint, reduced property value, increased resident auto insurance rate. Please listen and hear the tens of thousands who have signed an online petition opposing the plan. Thousands who have commented in opposition online, thousands who have donated time and money to communicate their opposition to this plan. The choice you have is simple. Reject those coming into your hometown for their financial gain and profit. The developers, their lawyers, Carvan Corporation, their profit is at the expense of our town residents, our clean air, our water supply, our quiet roads, our safe street, the quality of life that your neighbors chose when they set down roots in this town. The wrong choice will impact this town and the residents forever. Not just those who live here today, but generations ahead who will have to live with your wrong decision. This is your opportunity to stand for all that is good in Southwick before it will be lost forever. I'm asking you to listen to your conscience and make the right choices. Thank you.
Okay. There aren't any other hands raised online. Let me go to continue on this gentleman right here.
Dr. James Long, seventy-seven, ten year old. It's remarkable to hear the inconsistencies that were presented tonight. Uh, the original application said it was going to be up to thousand gallons of use per day of water and all of a sudden it's up to twenty-five thousand. The estimate that they proposed for employers, employees was about eight hundred per day and now it's getting four hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifty. The data you have is suspect. And I actually want to talk about the traffic study. I'm concerned about the validity of the study. It was especially earlier, the traffic count was based on a total of three hours. A section of the traffic report reads, and I quote, "Traffic count data was collected during the weekday morning peak hour from seven AM on Wednesday, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and the weekday afternoon peak period from four PM to six PM on Thursday, April first, twenty twenty-one." The report goes on to say, and I quote again, "Based on review of the traffic count data, the weekday morning peak hour occurs between seven AM and eight AM, and the weekday afternoon peak hour occurs between four PM and five PM. How can the morning peak hour be accurately determined when only one hour was studied? How can one determine a peak if there are no other points to compare it? I'm not a traffic engineer, but I don't feel the report and the conclusions it makes can be completely trusted as true, accurate and unbiased. Is a study of only three hours adequate and there are predicted increasing twenty-six hundred plus vehicles per trip daily? Was there a consideration of these, um, shifts changes being the time of school time of commutes? That's a big concern, particularly because the high school and the elementary school are Route fifty-seven. Additionally, the study was conducted during restrictions of the COVID nineteen pandemic and as you know, businesses were operating at limited, lower or no capacity. Schools were not in full session. The adjustment for this bank was an upscore of ten percent based on an almost three-year-old traffic study. Is that a valid assumption? The study only looked at ten railroad with ten two oh two intersection. It did not look at other adjacent roads or major intersections of ten two oh two and Route fifty-seven that would also be adversely affected by the applicant's activities. The applicants expect to be affect and usage are based solely on the numbers that they provided in the application. As the board verified the accuracy of the applicant's predicted traffic lines by comparing them to actual use data from other Carvana sites of similar size and community location. Also, the rail trail has an access point on Tenerife Road. Were there any pedestrian or bicycle studies under quantify the safety concerns that are inherent into this application? The board must request the applicant underwrite and obtain an independent, peer-reviewed traffic impact study to verify that the information that they provided is accurate and appropriate to the actual effect on traffic patterns, volume and safety concerns. Decisions must be made only on accurate and unbiased reports. Thank you.
So, um, thank you.
So Paul Forlal, Canadian Associates, Leicester, Luton. Just to go over the history of the traffic study, we have the data. Um, the gentleman ran a fairly questions in terms of the history of the data, most counted, most collected. As part of our study, we looked at historical data that dates back to twenty eighteen, which was actually collected by the, um, town consultant, uh, with respect to looking at that intersection to provide potential upgrades and see what that means for potential safety. So back in twenty eighteen, three days of traffic data was collected for over, uh, twenty-four hours for each of those three days. And that's what I identified in the appendix of the traffic study. Um, that was the basis of what we used to look at, um, the overall peaks throughout the day. Because obviously, you know, the traffic varies quite a bit, um, from the one o'clock hours to the afternoon hours. With respect to the three hours that you identified, those are specific fine, um, counted movements, which looked at turning movements specifically at that intersection. Um, what we did was we compared the data that was collected in twenty eighteen to volumes or collect this year back in March, which obviously has some COVID, COVID influence. We compared those numbers from the twenty eighteen to the numbers that we collected this year, um, actually higher than what was collected in twenty eighteen, which gives us, um, confidence.
This is all filler shit.
Excuse me, please. Again, I I don't, this is really.
Why don't you let other people speak instead of letting him just blah, 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 blah. We got shit. Look at their body language.
I really. I'm going to let him finish and then we're going to wrap this up and continue this public hearing up. Uh, please continue.
Just to summarize, the data that we used was actually data that was collected by a town back in twenty eighteen. This book to, um, uh, we actually looked at the town data that was on the, uh, Mastete website to be submitted to support potential improvements, um, which would have to be approved by Mastete. We then counted the traffic data back in March, which was consistent with that they get the higher. So we're very confident with the numbers that were collected with respect to the turning movements and the peaks throughout the day.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we're going to end this for tonight. It's it's eleven oh four now. Um, I see two options and I'll leave it up to the board. Um, right now, um, July thirteenth, we have a few things on early that we could probably work through reasonably quickly. And then we have, we can disc golf course on at seven thirty-five. Um, all right. I I'm, I'll leave it to the board. I mean, I, I guess my thought was if, um, you wanted to set a special meeting for a certain time, we could certainly do so, um, and and put it on by itself at that point in time, but. Twenty-seven. And. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the thirteenth, but then jump ahead. Um, what are you?
There's a gentleman. I can do thirteen works, twenty works. Ones. Thirteen's best.
Yeah, let me, um. Oh, no, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm, I, you know, you, you were here five years ago and we're moving to this one. So, um, I'm not sure. That's necessarily a five minute, uh, conversation. So, um, I, I, I would, that'd be different. Um, that is going to be a long, decent, might be, here. So, um, so what I'm going to suggest is, we put this on for, we put this on for seven forty on the thirteenth. We'll talk to the, during the disc golf applicant and see what they want to do. Um, and, you know, figure that out. Um, and then plan on, um, following it up with the July twentieth, um, dedicated hearing. And hopefully that will get us through the portion of this. I I I can't on, we can't do it on the, uh, we, we can't realistically, and I, hold on one second, Rob, uh, um, we can't realistically do that on the thirteenth because we've already set things for sort of a, you know, time. So it's, we can't fill it in necessarily in the course. Let's try that. The other thing to sort of consider is that the, there was a bunch of questions and comments and, um, information to be gathered by the applicant that they indicated that they were going to look at. So I do want to, uh, give them time to gather what they need to gather because that frankly is more of a productive, uh, conversation if they have information to provide, uh, and have an interaction with that. So, so maybe just doing it on the twentieth, maybe, and we can even start it. I I I'm not sure. I started at six if necessary.
That would be great. And just want to clarify that list. So there was some additional traffic information that was requested. Lady information that was in the application, but we'll make sure that that is provided. Um, there was some questions related to fire, uh, and emergency response. We can certainly reach out to fire department. There's questions about taxes, but I don't think that's pertinent. Um, and then as far as anything, oh, questions about water, but those have been divided, but we can certainly elaborate.
I'll give you copies of the two letters that were, or two or three letters that were provided to us to the extent of having in there, you can certainly respond to that. You want to do it seven or you want to start at six? Twenty of the six.
It's six oh five.
Yeah, so.
How about you?
So, um, do I hear a motion to continue? Well. Let me. Um, let me do one thing. Um, well, suppose we don't need a motion to do this, but we're going to set up a hearing date, put it on our schedule for July twentieth. Uh, just start at six AM, six. And, uh, so we'll have a town manager's report, we'll have public comments, um, you know, as we typically do. And then we'll put this down for seven ten, or six ten on July twentieth. Um, so do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to July twentieth at six ten PM? Um, I will say also, I will talk to the folks I need to talk to and figure out where we can hold this and if we can hold it in a, in a way that is better than this. and if we can hold it in a, in a way that is better than this, uh, especially since it's isolated uh to that day, we will certainly do so. Okay? Do I hear that motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, all of us, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Posed, standing, okay.